Hello and welcome to Pittsburgh City Council Budget Hearings. I'm Councilmember Eric Strasburger and I chair the Committee Hearings and Policy. For this hearing, we will hear from the Office of Management and Budget, including the Operating Budget Division, the Capital Budget Division, CDBG Division, Procurement Division, and the Equipment Leasing Authority. So I'd like to invite everyone who will be joining us for this hearing up to the table. And while you're joining us, I'll ask Budget Director Peter McDevitt to give a brief overview of the department.
Thank you, Councilperson. The mission of the Office of Management and Budget is to provide leadership, strategic direction, and administrative oversight to all aspects of city government operations, and to develop and implement policy reflective of the goals and priorities of the citywide community. An overview of the Office of Management and Budget contains the following offices: the Executive Office, Office of Equal Protection -- sorry, I'm reading the mayor's office.
I was like, wait a minute.
Anyways, the mission of the Office of Management and Budget is to ensure the effective and efficient use of available resources in order to sustain and deliver a delivery of quality of services to the residents of the city of Pittsburgh. The Office of Management and Budget is organized into the following core teams to strengthen citywide financial and grant management: the Management Division, Capital and Asset Management, Community Development, Operating and Special Revenue, and Procurement. There is a total of 32 full-time positions in the 2025 operating budget, which is no change from 2024, but that does include upgrades of two grant officers to two grant analysts and an increase for the salary of the fleet coordinator. Overall, that is about $67,000 or 2.5% increase from 2024. A summary of non-personnel changes: overall, there is a $279,564 decrease in the operating That includes a $115,000 decrease for professional and technical services, a $58,000 increase for property services, a $69,000 decrease for other services, and a $224,000 decrease for supplies, and a $20,000 decrease for miscellaneous fees. And in the capital budget, the entire CDBG program flows through the capital budget, so you will see a number of line items for OMB from the CDBG team in the capital budget. And some trust funds: there's the Community Development Trust Fund for expenditures of projects to individual contracts and agreements, as indicated in the capital budget, that is the CDBG team, I believe. The Bridge and Asset Management Program Trust Fund: these funds are deposited in said trust funds and shall be used for costs related to the implementation of said program. The Facilities Trust Fund: funds to be used for the exclusive and irrevocable purpose of funding the maintenance, capital investment, acquisition, and disposition of city-owned facilities. The Lead Safety Trust Fund: these funds should be related to the implementation and enforcement of the Lead Safety Ordinance. The South Side Park Parking Enhancement District Trust Fund: this trust fund shall be established within Department of Management and Budget and may only be used in order to provide public safety resources, public works resources, needed infrastructure improvements, and parking enforcement for the South Side Flats Parking Enhancement District. And that is all I have.
Thank you, Director McDevitt. And for the record, we've been joined by Councilmembers Warwick, Kale Smith, and Charlene. I'll turn it over to the Director of OMB, it's Deputy Mayor Jake Pollock, and your team for any remarks or presentation that you might have.
We'll just introduce ourselves quickly. Jake Pollock, Deputy Mayor and Director of the Office of Management and Budget.
Patrick Cornell, Chief Financial Officer.
Linay Lincoln, Assistant Director for the Operating Budget.
David Hutchinson, Assistant Director for Capital and Asset Management.
Jennifer Olzinger, Chief Procurement Officer.
Kelly Russell, Assistant Director, Community Development.
I'll turn it over to Patrick to kick us off.
Sure, so thank you, everyone, for being here and joining us and allowing us to be here today. We did not come with a formal presentation, you know, we want to allow this to be a natural, free-flowing conversation. The only thing I did bring is I do have updates on city finances as of the end of November. That is, quite frankly, the only thing that we brought here. I wanted to be able to show you, one, what we had reported in our Q3 report, which was issued two weeks ago. Those numbers align with what we presented in the mayor's budget that was presented to City Council. And then through the end of November, we have had some updates, and in October as well, you know, we've had two more months to be able to deposit revenue. We have had two pay periods in October, we had three pay periods in November. There are still two pay periods outstanding in December, but we do expect a little bit of additional deposits for November, and we have a full month of collection to go for December. Right now, we are still on track for a surplus at the end of the year. This is something that our teams have been working very closely with Director Ghula's team to monitor, obviously, her team on the expense -- or the revenue side, and our teams with Linay on the operating side. So right now, we have collected $659 million, and we have spent out $620 million. That is a net operating balance of $40 million. And then, like I said, we still have things moving for the end of November; those books have not closed until December. So that is really all I wanted to prepare, you know, to share with you today, just the general update. In terms of the budget teams, I work with the operating team, the capital team, and the community development team. If you three want to go through and give a brief update of what your teams have been working on, and any changes you're expecting for 2025?
I can start with the operating team. We have two new analysts this year that started late June and early July, who have been diving in with their departments and getting to know them, and helping them work through both of their first budget process, and a lot of them have some newer financial fiscal analysts too that they've been working with. Outside of that, I also oversee our grants program, and our proposal has upgrading the two grants officers to grants analysts that would put them on par with the budget analysts, and a lot of both the budget analysts on the operating team and on the capital team, and allow us to have them dive a little bit deeper into some of the analytics on the grant side, not just within the city, but how they're, you know, spanning out to the county and what other work we can do, and how, you know, how that's valued, added value to the city overall. Outside of that, we're just, everybody else kind of shuffled around, the two analysts that remained shuffled around departments, so it's been a new learning experience as everyone has gone into this budget cycle with new departments. And I think they've all kind of taken that on with, really, some joy because everybody likes to change, as challenging as it may be. That's where we're at for grants and operating.
Yeah, for capital, we're still trying to help support programs in departments where they're delivering projects under some tough conditions in terms of the finances that are available, and also just the pricing that we're seeing increasing from different vendors on our capital projects has also been a challenge. Our two biggest user departments are DPW and Domey. I think for Domey, you all are kind of getting that conversation too of the limited resources around grant matching. Domey's starting to kind of see the benefits of applying for projects that are already in flight, that we've already fully funded, that even if we don't get the grant, we can still deliver the project. If we do get the grant, that's excellent, it creates more bandwidth for another project that may have come up in the meantime. And then DPW, we're just trying to support them as they finish out some projects that have taken some time in each of your districts to finish out. The capacity issues there, I think, will help get, slow down a little bit, they'll slow down once we are able to clear out some of the existing projects and make room on their books for some new projects as well.
Thanks, Dave. Kelly?
All right. Bring this a little bit closer. For community development, I'll just talk about some of the special COVID funding that we received over the past couple of years. For CDBGCV, we got a little under $11.5 million. So far, we've spent about $9.9 million of that with the spending deadline of June 2nd of 2025. The ESG Emergency Solutions Grant CV funding, that deadline actually ended of 9/30 of '23. We received a little over $6.4 million, we spent about $6.3 million for that. We still have ongoing ERAP funding, a total of $16 million, and so far, we've got $15.2 million of that spent. We're actually preparing for our program year for public service grants. Happy to say with this new budget, $650,000 went for City Council, $450 for your public service grants, $200,000 for the food bank. There's also $100,000 for the mayor's office. Through the capital budget team, this is the third year where the Urban Redevelopment Authority has received over about $5 million for Bedford Dwelling Project. For the second consecutive year, permits, licenses, licenses and inspections has received over $2 million for demolitions. And just some things that I'd like to spotlight for our accomplishments for the past year: we were able to use that CDBGCV funding for two very good projects, thank you, Dave, for getting this done. For Oberle, we were able to do a reconstruction to make their workspace, and also for their participants, a more COVID-friendly environment. And we also used $250,000 for HVAC project for Women's Base East, that's just wrapping up as well.
And then, Jen, if you want to address from procurement?
Yeah, from the procurement and fleet side, as of October, we are now fully staffed in all positions with the addition of our new fleet manager, Furman, this year. We also added our first-ever sustainable procurement specialist this year, that was a position swap. Everybody is up to speed and rolling right along, I guess I want to say. As far as solicitation-wise, we've submitted over 350 solicitations so far this year, and we'll probably be close around the 400 mark by the end of the year of work that the procurement team has processed. And Fleet has worked to really tighten up their finances of the ELA, did a whole revamp of the ARPA to make sure that that was all allocated properly, documented properly throughout the years, and that that's all being taken care of and spent, and will be spent in time. So that's kind of where we're at.
I think with that, that's our summary, sort of snapshot of the status of the Office of Management and Budget in the proposed budget, as well as, meaning operationally, as well as some of the particular funds that we're charged with. So we're open to questions.
Thank you. I appreciate everyone providing short updates on your work this year and what's in the budget. I think we'll do what we did before, start at the far end of the table and work our way to this end of the table with Councilmember Warwick first.
Okay, yeah, thank you all very much for being here and for all your work this year. I don't have too many questions, although I'm thinking maybe questions will come up as we go through, but, well, one thing I did want to say is, just with regard to the finances for the next two years, so, you know, we've known since last year that we have two very lean years coming, right? And I'm wondering, I know that there are, well, it's all a little unknown, but, you know, as far as what's going to be happening at the federal level in terms of funding, is there, I think I know the answer, but I think it's worth asking, in terms of our big, big capital projects, right, bridges, all these kinds of things, and anything, you know, any other projects, whether it's grants or whatnot, do we have concerns about money that we are counting on for the coming two years and maybe beyond that we are afraid might not be there? And if so, just sort of general thoughts about that?
Quickly, just to address the first part of your question, just sort of level set. So the challenges for the next two years are driven by, on the one hand, the end of federal funding through the American Rescue Plan being available to support primarily the operating budget after this year, coupled with reduced property tax revenue stemming from challenges to assessments caused both by the changing nature of kind of the market economies of downtown commercial business districts, as well as challenges relating to the common-level ratio court decision. None of those challenges change in light of the transition in federal administration, right? We were prepared, and we are prepared, for the ARPA change, and all of the dynamics that would affect the property tax question are local. Questions about federal funds that I would most point, I would point to as most at risk are the CDBG block grant programs. We have continuously seen declining allocations to that program overall, so just, again, to set context, federally, nationwide, right, that program continues to shrink. However, I think that there's reason to believe, based on some statements coming out of the incoming federal administration, about pursuing government efficiency in the way that they define it, that HUD generally, and potentially that program, could be in line for potentially more significant reductions than that pattern. We don't know that, there's been no definitive statement to that effect, it's just something that is, I think, more likely today than it was a few months ago. The formulaic funding from the federal government for transportation projects is also something that we're monitoring, but it is, that's a difficult one to predict. Again, it is a large-scale federal highway program. Much of the funding that we ultimately receive from the Southwestern Pennsylvania Commission passes through PennDOT on its way to the SPC, and ultimately is passing through PennDOT on its way, excuse me, passing through PennDOT on its way from Federal Department of Transportation. So any ways in which those formulas could be modified would have cascading effects on down to us, but they wouldn't be specific to Pittsburgh. I think it's, again, too early to say what the direct implications of that would be. We do know that those projects are planned, and that funding is allocated on long-term timelines, right? We talked about the five- and 12-year TIP, that's the Transportation Improvement Plan. For that reason, it would be our hope that any challenges would be ones that emerge in terms of new, like, new projects that we would get into the planning cycle moving forward, less than projects that we're already counting on specific dollars and those going away. The area where, that latter scenario, where things that we believe that we have turn out to be at risk, would largely be in discretionary awards, so not these types of formula funds, but in grant awards that have been made from the federal government, that may be clawed back if we're not sufficiently far along in the process. For that reason, we've been pursuing very aggressively with all those involved, completely securing final grant agreements on any outstanding federal grants before the end of the calendar year to mitigate as much as possible that risk. And with respect to some of those grants, a lot of our major awards are already fully contracted, we have a signed grant agreement. There are, you know, over the past three fiscal years, federal appropriations have returned. Three of our six projects at the moment have signed agreements, and we are working towards full approval, both from City Council for the remaining ones, so you'll see some resolutions come up shortly. One will be up at Standing Committee this week, that was introduced last week, but we are working through what we need to do with the federal government across all of the different agencies to make sure that those funds are secured and contracted.
So, I mean, just to sort of get more specific, I guess I can just, in my, I'm thinking primarily of the Charles Anderson Bridge, right, it's like this giant bridge project, it is, you know, the deck is now gone, right, like, it needs to finish, otherwise, we have, you know, half a bridge.
I will place that in the lowest category of risk. Nothing is set in stone enough, and likely won't be until after, you know, inauguration day in January, for us to say anything for certain, but I would put that in the lowest category of risk. Funding has been secured by agreements, work is ongoing. The types of projects that we are most concerned about are those that are much further out in terms of their progression and/or, you know, are still pending executed agreements. So I wouldn't, I don't believe there's much reason to be concerned about the Charles Anderson Project or those other bridge projects that are currently underway.
Okay, okay, thank you. And then, I guess, just the last question I have, at least for this round, is around, we've heard a lot about the jock tax. So my understanding of the situation is that, is that, you know, on the one hand, there is the thought that we shouldn't be including that because of the pending, you know, because of the pending litigation, but, of course, if we feel that, you know, we have a good case, that we do want to include it, is there a middle ground where we could put it, like, in an escrow or something like that? Just to keep it, you know what I mean, so that, I mean?
It's included in the revenue projections because we are currently collecting it, and we are currently collecting it in accordance with the current status of the case. We believe strongly in our likelihood of success in the case, and thus, in our ability to continue collecting it. If we were to lose, we would have to make an adjustment to the forecast, we would still be collecting revenue from performers under the wage tax, but it would be a different calculation. So it's not an all-or-nothing toggle, I guess I just want to make that part clear, first of all. You know, ultimately, we forecast, or the Finance Department, more accurately, forecasts based on known variables, and the known variable now is we don't know when there will be a decision or what the outcome of it will be. We know that under current circumstances, we are and will continue to collect it based on the current status of the ruling. I think, as relates to management of funds, right, that tax is projected to collect a relatively small amount relative to the entire, you know, revenue projection for the upcoming years. We're on target this year, for example, to have a $17 million surplus, which is, I think, more than twice the entire collection from the facility's usage fee. So we believe that it's within our ability, on an ongoing basis, through expenditure savings, to manage any transitional point where there's a ruling, if that ruling were to be an adverse ruling. So it falls, the amount of money falls within the sort of management control window that we think we have with our finances.
And operationally, you would see it come out of the prior year facility usage fee line in the budget, the same way that we're seeing real estate refunds right now. You know, we have, basically, you're seeing monies leave the revenue account, but they're offset by the other monies that are brought in.
Okay, so, just so I'm clear, so we have a $17 million surplus this year?
That's projected for the end of the year. We won't know until the books close at the end of December, but yes, that's our projected surplus at the end of the year.
And what does that, what does that mean? I mean, does that just mean it goes into next year's budget?
That will move into the fund balance, so that basically beefs up our reserves. And from there, that is what we use to measure our fund balance percentage. You know, per city code, we have to maintain at least 10% of our fund balance. That's one of the three main factors of how do we pass a legal budget. One is, you have to be balanced, you have to have revenues greater than expenditures. Our fund balance percentage in each year of our five-year operating plan needs to be greater than 10%, and then on the capital side, our annual debt service needs to be less than 12% of total spend each year. So those are the three big factors that we're always looking, looking at to present to you and to our residents a legal budget.
So, oh, go ahead.
Just for comparison, last year, it was about $34 million, so it is smaller, and we can attribute most of the difference. At this point, you know, again, as expenditures, including spending coming in under budget, sort of improves the number, and then revenues coming in under, under projection, reduces the number, we can attribute most of the difference between the two years to real estate tax collections coming in under budget as these appeals have been adjudicated.
Okay. Okay, so, I guess, do you, so, all right, so $17 million projected surplus, so that would cover, so in other words, that would cover, like, a worst-case scenario with the jock tax would be covered by the surplus?
If it were to happen tomorrow, the difference would be covered two and a half times over by the surplus. Now, so my point being, we arrive at that surplus this year, even as we've seen revenue come in under projections because of those appeal cases, because we've been able to react to new information by adjusting spending, right? We are significantly under budget in spend for this year because we've been anticipating these challenges, but also just generally are always on the lookout for ways to, you know, spend less than budgeted if at all possible. And so I would say that the amount that we are projecting for the facility's usage fee falls squarely within that window of our ability to respond on an expenditure basis if we were to get, you know, a ruling against us.
So, as far as the savings, does any, I mean, would you, if anyone would like to speak to places where we are realizing these savings?
Can you give the total number first, just how far we are under budget on expenditures?
I mean, like, how are you getting, you know what I mean, what types of projects, what departments?
Sure, so, one of the biggest factors this year was in the Department of Finance and our debt service, the same way that we've had good interest returns on our revenue portion. The monies that are in our debt service sinking fund, which is kind of separated out from the general fund, they have also seen interest earnings. So we were able to pull those before we actually make our March and our September debt service payments. So there's several million dollars there that we did not have to move from the general fund to pay our debt service because of these positive interest earnings. We know that as the Fed continues to meet and lower interest rates, that will start to change, but as of right now, that's been incredibly helpful, and that's probably our biggest driver of savings. In some cases, you have the natural ebb and flow of hiring across departments as people come onto city employment or leave, there are salary savings. We account for some of that with vacancy allowance, but if there is a particularly hard-to-fill position, you know, if it's several months, those savings also add up.
Okay, I think that's all I have for this round. Thanks.
Thanks, Councilmember Warwick. Councilwoman Kale Smith.
I'll wait till everyone's done.
Okay. Councilperson Charlene.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for being here. One question that's come up multiple times now is the amount of money that we're leaving on the table in terms of grants. And this is something that we've talked about, and I know Domey is very adamant about this, that there's a lot of money out there that we cannot go after because we do not have the matching funds for these grants. Comes up in other departments as well. It is a strong desire that we find a way that we can create, I don't know if it's creating a grant trust fund, something like that, that we can secure money, or have the local, have the local match not be the barrier for free money on the table. And I told the story, the council has heard over and over again, about how last year, from the mayor's first to second budget, we lost a signal upgrade, we then found the money for the local match, and were able to get the signal upgrade, which then saved, you know, we essentially paid 20% of what we would have had to originally pay. And I think there is a lot of opportunity that is missed, and money that's left on the table, and therefore, resources that taxpayers are paying into or not benefiting from, because we have local match rules that are more stringent than they need to be. What can we do to get past this and get that free money?
So the thing that we've, and Dave spoke to this in his summary update, the across-the-board solution that we've applied is encouraging departments as much as possible. I don't recall the specifics of the project that you used as your example, but if I'm following what you described, it may be an example of this. In applying for grants for projects that we've already fully funded, so if there's a project for, I'll use it as a general example, even if it doesn't apply to that case, if there's a project for a single upgrade somewhere in the city that has its budget funded, and it's in the capital budget for next year. and it's in the capital budget for next year. And then we apply for a grant for that project. If we are successful, then we can use twenty percent of what we've already budgeted to act. We have the match immediately. They're applying for a project that's already funded. The match is twenty percent of whatever we were already being prepared to spend the entire amount of. That match can immediately go to that project and the other eighty percent of funds can be reallocated to other projects that aren't yet funded or have developed funding gaps. So that's the strategy that we've been encouraging folks, departments to follow since 2022 is to first and foremost, where possible, pursue projects that are already in flight, as Dave put it, in their applications for grant funds. And then rather than looking for grants as opportunities to pursue new projects, look at the savings generated by receiving a grant to be redeployed to fund those new projects. So if we just shift the kind of orientation where the grant, we're not using grants as ways to add projects to the list. We're using them as ways to produce savings on projects that are already on the list and that then freeing up resources to expand. That is the the least barrier way to identify matching funds for any particular application. Having said that, there are instances where opportunities present themselves mid-year. You know, we may have a grant opportunity that presents itself for which no existing projects are applicable, right? But there are projects on the longer wish list, if you will, that would be, and then we have to look to identify matching funds. I I think it's not just identifying the matching funds that is the challenge, right? It is identifying the full lifecycle of the project. So for example, if the grant opportunity is for design, we could identify the necessary matching funds to secure the grant for design. But if we know there's no room in the remaining three out years of the life of the project for construction, that is where often OMB is cautioning departments against pursuing a grant to then design a project that we know we don't have the long-term funding to construct. And that's really the balancing act that we find ourselves in frequently. Dave, do you want to add anything to that?
Yeah, for for capital, we don't really set the rules for for matching funds. Those are sent by the grantor in terms of the flavor of money that it can be. One thing that I think Domi's done a good job of and Amanda on Lanay's team has been trying to leverage grants for other grants as a local match. In District Four, we did that, hope to do it successfully in the next week or two, where we're able to use a smaller award for Arlie to match a larger award for CMAC congestion management air quality grant. So in those scenarios, we are able to do kind of a Russian nesting doll strategy for it to get a a bigger project going. But in terms of rules, it's not that we're setting out rules, it's that we ask the departments, okay, if you need three hundred thousand dollars, is there another project you want to sacrifice so that we can go after the grant? And they're in the same spot we all are. They don't want to, they don't want to cut another project to make a grant application happen. They may not even, to Jake's point, end up with a full project at the end of it.
And and so just to summarize there, I mean, I think that one of the driving challenges at this point is that inflation has meant that most projects end up with cost overruns that have us on the hunt for additional funding one, two, three years in to address, you know, bids coming in over budget. Much of that funding in the past, when we weren't in such an inflationary environment, was the funding that was being identified mid-year to serve as the match for something new. But most of that that spending latitude on an annual cycle that has existed in the past is now being consumed by cost overruns. Those are just a number of the factors that go into the calculation of this sort of matching question. Having said all of that, I think we're open to creative solutions that make that process, you know, more flexible. These are the things that we've tried and the barriers that we've run into.
So I, you know, I I hear what you're saying there, but in practical terms, departments don't have individuals that are going after grants, right? You know, so Mike Maylock, I said I wasn't gonna say it, Mike Maylock, who we all love, is managing this Greenlight Go project. We fund the project for him and then we tell him, oh, in addition to all the other things you're managing, can you also find a way to make this already paid-for project cost less? And now Mike has to write a grant on top of managing the project. So how, I mean, how can we be successful if that's our strategy?
Well, I'll push back there that the purpose of the grants office is to help. At the end of the day, the grants office is the one hitting submit. You know, our grants officers, hopefully soon to be grants analysts, need some of the technical support when they're working through projects. But Amanda, who is still doing double duty, so I'll give Amanda a lot of credit right now, is working very closely with Domi to figure out how do we get Greenlight Go there? You know, the capital budget analyst Brendan is working with them and with Domi's fiscal staff to say, how do we figure out, if you're not able to scrape up funds elsewhere, how do we figure out how to make it work? It is, it is very collaborative and it it is, you know, not, departments shouldn't be doing these grants on their own anyway. So they're routing through the grants team and that's how they're they're working through.
And I guess I would just add that the the amount of work would be the same either way. Either a project is fully funded and then we proceed with the city funding. And then we are writing grant applications for new projects, at which point we then have to identify available funds to serve as the match for an unplanned expenditure, which is difficult to do under the other fiscal constraints. Or we write the grant for the already funded project, again, still writing one grant, whether it's, regardless of what grant you're writing. But we're writing it for a project where we know we have five times the match requirement already allocated because it's twenty percent of the cost, so we're still writing one grant. If we get it, the grant reduces the cost of the project and we now have the other eighty percent available in a much more flexible way. So it's it's the same amount of work.
It's the same amount of work, but it's, the incentive is different, right? The incentive of getting your project funded is different from if your project doesn't exist or if if you're doing the work to get your your project off the ground. It it, you're you're creating a different incentive structure for, you know, if I'm, if I'm sitting there with a workload that we know our traffic engineers have and I'm thinking, I have to also get this grant in. Or I'm thinking, if I don't get this grant, I don't, you know, we don't do the the workload for the the summer this year. Your incentives, your motivations change.
I suppose, I I suppose that it's possible that an individual would react that way. I mean, the, at the end of the day, the funds that are freed up remain within, not the project, but the the category of, in most cases, the category of spending. Would, I would, we would start on the presumption that those funds that are freed up remain certainly within the department, right? The first call on those funds that are are made available would be to the department that got the grant that freed them up. So so depending on how ultimately the department director and that sort of senior staff in the department sees fit to allocate them, you're right, you could be writing a grant that frees up money in traffic that then goes to support a bridge project, or it could remain in another traffic project. That that those are discussions that are happening within the departments. But I still see the incentive to free up funds to allow other projects to advance.
I, you know, I I guess I'm I'm landing with, I think that I I wish that there was more of a incentive for us to take the free money and make that a priority for us, especially in these lean years, and find ways to get creative to make sure that we're we're getting all the money on the table. And when when, you know, when I meet with directors and I ask them, you know, who is it in your department that's looking for grants? Not, none of them are. They they don't have the the time for that.
We're not asking them to identify the grant opportunities either. We we do that and then share the opportunities that that we identify with the departments who might have eligible projects. I think the major distinction in what we're talking about here is, again, that we encourage them to pursue already funded projects because we know that we by default have the match identified.
And Dave alluded to it earlier. At what point is it better for constituents, for residents, for the projects that are on the books to get done? If someone is concerned about bandwidth to go after a grant, if that's awarded, then that's just another new project on their portfolio that we might not even have, you know, a project manager who can who can lead that effectively, you know? So do you want to sacrifice the quality of an existing project for the quantity of grants? And that's something that strategically we are looking at every time we go after an application.
So I I want to change topics here. I think we've exhausted that. The reserve fund balance. So we're we're talking, you know, you've mentioned that we're ultimately going to come under expenditures at the end of the year this year, which is great. I'm glad to hear that. But it it seems like we're not highlighting that our reserve fund balance continues to drop and we are dipping out of our rainy day fund over the the next five years and continue to do that. And I understand that why we need to do that, but, and I understand why you don't want to highlight that. But I do think that's important that we we acknowledge that when we talk about really where we are in in our financial shape here. It's it's not that things are going well. We are dipping into the rainy day fund.
So I I mean, as of right now through today, we haven't yet for this year, right? Revenue in is still greater than expenditures out for 2024. You know, if we had a very conscious expenditure to make that pulled from our reserve fund balance, that would, that would come up to counsel for authorization, that would move through different channels that we haven't gotten to yet. I don't think in the nine years I've been here, we've done something like that other than at the end of 2020, when, you know, we had to spend down.
All right, so the fund balance goes from a hundred and seventy-seven, hundred and, yeah, a hundred and seventy-seven million down to a hundred and forty-five million next year, down to a hundred and nineteen, a hundred and twelve, ninety-six. So I I just, I I think it's important that we we make sure we're not painting this as a as business as usual. That is not sustainable. That is not a good thing. That is a very bad thing. That is a very scary thing. As we've worked really hard to build this this fund balance up and it is, it is plummeting here.
I mean, yes, like, the numbers will fluctuate and change. I would almost bet money that by the time we get to 2029, the number is going to be different than what we've projected.
I'm sure.
Right? So things are going to change and and like I said earlier, the fund balance as a percentage of expenditures is the 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 codified way for us to ensure that there is enough money to get us through any tough scenarios.
I'm sorry, I'll just add an observation to that. The way in which we forecast, this goes back to my answer regarding the facilities' usage fee. So we forecast based on known variables. And so you will see in the five-year forecast presently, real estate values continuing to go, real estate collections go down every single year because we know what the common level ratio decision tells us. We know what that will mean for the common level ratio to go down annually based on that ruling. And so we have projected into this a certain number of appeals every year based on the continued reduction in the common level ratio. That's not a, that is a circumstance that applies to us, the school district, the county, and every school district or municipality in the county. It's unsustainable for everyone and we're far from unique in that regard. So I, to to a point similar to Patrick's, I fully anticipate that ultimately there will be a a change through county action, state action, or some some other action that arrests that continued decline in the common level ratio somewhere in this five-year window that will stop the progressive decline in real estate collection. However, we can't project into the forecast when that will be. So the this is, the the numbers look very dire here. If there were a solution in 2025 to that common level ratio scenario that stabilized property tax revenue, next year's calculation would look entirely different. And so until we know when and what that solution looks like, the forecast will continue to look like this. And this forecast says that we are remaining above the reserve requirement and under the debt service requirement. But but we anticipate that something will change, whether that's reassessment, a new court ruling, state-level policy change. Difficult to project at this point, but but something will change that calculation in the next five years because there are municipalities and school districts in Allegheny County in significantly more tenuous position than we are for whom the current common level ratio scenario is is catastrophic. And 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 so, while I can't answer that question, I I the the assumptions here are not likely to hold through that full period. We just simply can't say when they'll change, so we're not projecting the change.
Yeah, I mean, I I guess there are, there are certainly other municipalities and school districts that haven't built up the reserve that we were able to build up that we are not running through. I, you know, I understand that. I just it is something that needs to be continually highlighted, that that is, as it stands right now, that is where we're we're headed. And I I don't, in the same way that I, you know, understand with your projections, you don't like to to pick unknown variables. I don't like us saying that things are going to be fine because of this unknown variable is going to change.
I agree. That's why we make the con, the conservative case in the projections for what if nothing changes to show that at least in the five-year window that we're looking at, the we remain stable, right? I I'm saying that I think the outcome will be better than we're projecting here because I expect that variable to change. But we've designed the spending plan so that it remains within requirements even if nothing changes. So so I share your unwillingness to just sort of assume that some future change will will solve the situation, which is why we're not, for example, proposing a budget. Well, we couldn't even, even if, let's say CO didn't require us to project or propose a balanced budget for every year in the five-year plan. We could then produce a budget that shows a deficit in years four and five and say, we we're confident that this common level ratio thing will be sorted out by year three, so don't worry about that deficit. That would be extremely irresponsible of us and and that's why we've not done that. I I still, I understand your concerns. I understand your unease even with the scenario as projected. But I just sort of wanted to elaborate on the difference. We view our charge as, take that uncertainty as a given, so assume that no solution arrives and produce a plan that fits within those constraints.
And it's the benefit of doing a five-year operating plan and a six-year capital improvement plan, that that we're actually looking to the future, right? Pre-ACT 47, that wasn't happening. A lot of municipalities don't have to do that. So the fact that we're going that far out and we'll know, like I said, things will adjust and we'll be able to react sooner than, you know, we're not going to get to five years from now and say, oh, snap, we should have made a change. We can do that as we move through the course of the plan.
And I I would say that Director Pollock, I reject your your characterization that we are stable. I would say that we are legal, but we are, I I wouldn't say that no scenario where your your fund balance is dropping like that, are you stable? So just another broad question that I have. We are going to, uh, we are going to spend more than projected in police salary and police overtime, and we're going to cut both of those accounts next year. How are we going to to make that work?
So right now, we are actually under budget on regular salaries in the police bureau. Overtime is up and that kind of counteracts it. As more officers come on, those regular wages will go up. But then, of course, as more officers are on patrol, on detective, on investigations, that should have a corresponding decrease in premium pay. So it still should remain where it needs to.
Yeah, we're cutting premium pay by two and a half or two, two, it's not two and a half, it's two. And we're reducing salary by one and a half. Do, does command staff know that they're not going to be able to use overtime like they did this year? I mean.
Sorry, I'm looking this up. I mean, command staff always has the discretion over over staffing. You know, that is something that that we've worked through. Two million less in premium pay and one point six less in in regular wages.
I I mean, I talked to my commander about this and he's like, I mean, he was not happy to hear that he doesn't, and also, like, I don't know, he doesn't know how he's going to make things work with a projection like that in overtime.
Noted.
Okay. Uh, I, I thought that it was important that OMB come last so that we could talk about things that are, you know, because this is your, your budget. Uh, we could talk about things that are beyond that and, uh, I've got a couple of other questions, but I'll let other members go that might be a little more specific to OMB and happy to, happy to come back.
Thank you very much. Uh, let's move on to Councilwoman Gross. I do want to note that we did have, um, Council, Councilman Khari Mosley here and he might be back to join us, but, um, we'll turn it over to Councilwoman Deb Gross.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And thank you, everyone. I'll, I'll just follow up on the, the last question from my colleague because I think what I heard was a little bit of two different topics, right? It, um, the question was about like, well, the dollar pot is one size this year and the dollar pot of, for hours of officer time is shrinking slightly for next year. Um, and the premium pay pot of dollars, instead of saying budgeted, I'm not, I'm saying pot of dollars is shrinking slightly. But the answer was that, in fact, regardless of the pot of money for regular staffing, it's that there weren't staff there, there will be more staff next year.
That's correct. So, so we anticipate the call, the, the need for overtime to reduce as there are more officers.
On the clock.
Correct, which eh, I mean, we, we just started, like, maybe, let's say it was a month ago, I don't remember the exact date. Uh, a class of 42 recruits, the largest that we've had in quite some time, certainly the largest since the academy process reopened. So as, and there are other classes in flight. So, so as the, that process produces additional officers, we anticipate additional officers on...
In 2025, there will be more officers on regular pay on the job on a daily basis than there were in 2024. Because this recruiting class is added to the amount of officer time.
There'll be more officers available, right?
More by officers available, so there will be more people on regular payroll time. And then that corresponds, is a correlation, inverse correlation to premium pay, is what I heard.
That's, that's correct.
And if, I just had a light bulb moment, so if you'll allow me real fast too. Um, you know, the new recruits we come, that have come on and come through the academy this year, um, they are paid at a lower rate, they move through the natural progression at a different level than, you know, a master patrol officer. We've had retirements this year, so as we, we fill in officer spots, they are being paid less. So that is one of the reasons why you see the regular wages when we budget.
Also, there are, there would be more people on regular wages instead of being on overtime.
Right.
In 2025 compared to 2024 and additionally, there's people who are on the clock, some of them will be at a lower pay rate.
Correct, and there's also, um, you know, the, the budgeted number at 750 is salary savings in and of itself, in terms of the budget.
Yeah, well, that makes sense to me, yeah.
The other just component that I would add to that if approved is that the budget anticipates, um, 23 or 26? An, an addition of numerous, um, civilian positions in the police bureau, meaning that some officers presently serving in administrative functions would return to either investigations or patrol, which is another...
They would not be on premium time.
Correct, that's, that's more officers available on regular time and thus not charging against premium pay.
I'd rather have them on patrol than on the phones. Thank you. Um, so I also, I'm just going to shift back to, I think the very first question from one of my colleagues, which was that, you know, what are these future revenue projections? And I took notes as you were speaking, Director Pollock. And you have, uh, you outlined, um, pretty quickly that three categories of operating budget funds that I was able to capture in my notes, ARPA, property taxes, and CDBG. Um, and that those are all for their various reasons. Either we know they're going away like ARPA, or really pretty sure for property taxes that this, until there's some systematic or systemic structural change, every municipality in the county is going to be negatively impacted. And then, um, we're afraid for CDBG.
We're certainly, we're uncertain about it.
Yeah, nationally.
If, if anything in the last 30 years is an indication, we know it will go down. We don't know by how much or whether the degree, the, the rate at which it's going down will increase.
Right, and then, um, you also mentioned two capital budget funds, right? So those kinds of Department of Transportation formal funds and then on to other kinds of infrastructure, including DOT, but federal funds that would fund capital budget projects like Inflation Reduction Act. And I don't think I know all the acronyms of the various federal pods that are currently still there and we hope there's, they remain there for some time to come, right? I've heard a few mentioned today. So let me go back up to the top, the ARPA funds. Basically, every big city in the country got some, even smaller municipalities. Um, you know, how are we doing? I always talk about our kind of 13 or 14 benchmark cities, but so like, how did we do? And exciting, I mean, we've touched on it maybe a little in other budget hearings. What's everybody else doing? Like, yeah, so we can expand there.
We, we sent over a final cleanup reallocation bill, I believe it was introduced, uh, or last week?
It is currently being held for a public hearing that is scheduled for the ninth.
Right, and, and that bill, its primary purpose is to take funds that were left uh, as remainders in accounts for projects that were completed under budget uh, and reallocating those funds basically to be encumbered and spent immediately, offsetting some operating costs from this year that arose in, in the context of all of what I, we were describing this whole time. Revenues come in under, you know, we can, we can plus up our operating support by a small amount and clear out those remainders. With that allocation, we are extremely competent, confident that we will have fully expended or, uh, encumbered 100% uh, excuse me, expended or obligated to use the federal terminology, 100% of our ARPA funds within the time period allowed. Um, meaning that there will be some funds that are budgeted to projects that will reach completion sometime between January 1/25 and December 31st, 26th. Um, the two-year window that we're allowed to finish spending funds on capital projects and things of that nature, but they will be fully under contract. So, um, very difficult to claw back, if you will, right? We, we, we receive them, we've appropriately appropriated them, encumbered them, signed a contract with someone to spend them and that work is simply continuing.
So, do you have, um, interactions with like, what is the federal department that is like, that we communicate with? And like, who's, who's got, who's, who's doing oversight on the city and what do they have to say?
Yeah, sure, so, um, I'm handling all of our ARPA reporting and ARPA compliance. Um, we have had meetings with the White House. Um, the US Department of Treasury is, um, the agency that is tasked with full compliance. Um, earlier towards the beginning of this year, I met with representatives from the White House, the SLFRF, I don't even know what that stands for anymore, um, recovery funds and, uh, representatives from Treasury. And, um, we walked through where we were at that time. Um, we talked through the plans we had for our remaining projects and, and the contracts that we've moved through obligation. Um, even then, they were, they were impressed with the work that Pittsburgh has done. As of...
How so?
Um, at that time, we had moved a lot of things, um, through, through contracts, through council authorization, through spending. Um, that's a lot of our smaller, uh, smaller municipalities, smaller cities, even some of the larger cities are having a harder time moving things through. Um, over the past week or two, there was a flurry of emails where, um, Treasury was advising groups that, hey, you can't just say you spent this on lost revenue, you actually have to obligate it and mark it as a project. Um, we have 19 projects that we've reported to Treasury, um, for lost revenue alone. So, you know, we've moved through the process in a way that...
You're saying that the White House and Treasury is saying that you're, you're documenting it better than other cities?
Correct, or actually spending it better than other cities.
Both, both.
So as of the end of Q3, I just pulled it up, um, we had $269 million spent out of 335, that's 80%. Um, we have one last bill that is moving through standing committee, I believe, this week. And that should be the last authorization for contracting. Um, when I was looking at it, um, this morning, I believe there is about $3 million that is not yet obligated, separate from what we are going to reallocate. That, um, everything is at various stages of routing through law or routing through DocuSign or moving us towards completion of that obligation phase.
For context, 3 million is less than 1%. Um, the other thing I think I'll note that we, we've heard positive feedback on is the, I, I would say the balanced, um, or perhaps even, um, you know, ambitious approach that we've taken to the expenditure of the funds. There are cities in the category that Patrick's describing where they're still struggling to, to sort of get um, everything under contract and appropriate. There are also cities that put 100% of their ARPA funds into, uh, loss recovery, meaning they, they booked all of the money as, um, making up for losses they, on their operating budget that they incurred during the shutdown period and did not pursue any new projects or initiatives with the funding. We've, um, we certainly dedicated a significant portion of our ARPA resources to offsetting operating losses because we actually incurred significant operating losses that needed to be recovered. But anything beyond that has been deployed to doing new and innovative and, and positive things, much of it in housing, um, through partnership with the URA, but significant portions of it in, um, you know, capital projects, um, on recreation centers. And in, uh, transportation, bridges became an area of focus, right? And we, we've deployed these funds in a diverse and varied way. Um, that certainly made the process of tracking the compliance more difficult, um, more time-consuming, I should say, more complicated. But has been, um, I think applauded by some of our, the, the federal agencies, the White House and Treasury specifically, that we've been interacting with for taking that more assertive approach and that more ambitious approach and still being ahead of the, the curve on our tracking compliance and actual expenditure.
And as we move through project closeout, I'll be compiling, you know, what were the actual tangibles? How many vehicles did we purchase?
That's my next question, Director.
How many people did the URA help buy a house for the first time, which was a $15 million project alone? So that like, that's one of the ones that has been incredibly successful. Um, you know, what happened at West Penn, and I know I'm still trying to get that answer for you. What happened at Phillips, what happened at, you know, all the other places that we had individual projects? Um, some of them are easy, eh, more easily seen. Um, you know, the Davis Avenue pedestrian bridges, there is a thing where there was no thing. Um, but some of them, it's working through HVAC, working through roofing, working through recycling packers. So, um, as projects close, we'll have a much better sense of, of how we actually report it out, both for city council, but also to kind of highlight what the city of Pittsburgh did to the entire country.
Is there a place where we can see any of this yet? Like, I'm, I'm dying, I, I apologize, I, I probably should be able to recall this and I should have been following it. We, we hear a lot while we're at the table because we've had to vote on every single dollar that has moved. But, and so I, I don't know if there's like a website tracker thing we do do.
So we have, um, posted publicly on, um, OMB's website is all of our ARPA reporting, both what we submit to Treasury and some of those categories do have, you know, number of clients or number of, of houses brought online, things like that. Um, we have separate controllers' reports of just spend at the project level.
But those are hard to like thumb through on your screen.
Through, um, that's why, you know, once projects close out, it'll be easier to give a final, a final rundown.
And so just to maybe put a, a button on the point that Pat just made to make it clear. At the end of the year, when most of those projects will close as a result of the final actions that we're taking now and others will be in a much, you know, much less rigorous mode because it'll just be tracking spending against contracts that are already executed. It's our plan, you know, basically, we had until the end of this year to fully spend the money or get it under contract for things that'll take a little longer to complete. It's not entirely done, but, but our ARPA efforts will largely be either finished or on autopilot after January 31st, I'm sorry, after December 31st, at which point we're preparing to produce a more digestible summary, um, report.
Like you could literally, if you're the public, like go on the city council legislator and kind of look and read the text file of every single piece of legislation, but it would probably be a couple of hundred separate pieces.
Right, and so all, all of that, all of that exists now, but we can summarize it for everyone until really December 31st, but, um, even until the last, you know, couple of months, those, those have been very fluid figures. They'll become a lot less fluid once we submit those final reports for this year, at which point we can paint that clearer picture.
So if, if you look in the, the front of the operating budget, there is an ARPA section and it does list out all of the, the resolutions that council has passed. Um, we do have one annual report for Treasury, the recovery plan itself that gets updated and that has a lot more information than just the quarterly report.
And where is that found?
That is on OMB's website, the URL has shifted with the new website, but it is, it is available.
Treasury reports from this city to federal treasury on our ARPA.
Correct, everything I send to Treasury is, uh, available online. And I'd add for the public's benefit too, that the controller's office is doing annual audits of, um, the ARPA trust fund itself. We finished, well, they finished and we've closed out 21 and 22. Um, 23 is the year that our spending really kicked into high gear, so it's taken a little bit longer. But there, you know, there is that extra control and check and balance as well.
Sure, sure, but, and it's different for us to see what actually happened then and what we budgeted for, right? Like we know that we gave the URA the funds for a first-time homeowner thing and I've seen maybe some press releases from the URA, but again, just to have it all, so, because it was, that's like, even, even just the top line ARPA budget lines is a spreadsheet in itself, right? Um, so, okay, great, appreciate that. Um, I'm going to probably, um, let other members go too, um, because I know there's just lots of questions and answers and so, um, I, I'll leave it there, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Councilwoman, Councilman Wilson. Floor is yours.
Thank you. I've just been, um, listening to all my colleagues and the questions, so I think I got a pretty good, well-rounded, uh, view of what's, what's going on here. But I want to just ask, um, you know, the question about possible tax increases in the future. Can you walk me through that of why we would need to do that or why we wouldn't need to do that?
I'll start with saying we're not proposing one either this year or in any year in the five-year plan based on current conditions. For the reasons that I said, to answer your question, the reasons we would need to consider one, if we are to need to consider one at some point in the future, the reason we would need to do that is, um, in order to correct for a, uh, struct, structural deficit, right? If, if our five-year projections showed that we were going to end, begin ending years in a deficit um, and that that will be prolonged, then our choices would be cut spending in order to remain within the resources that the current tax rates produce or propose a tax increase or both. You know, meaning a smaller tax increase and a spending cut to balance the budget. Those, those are the reasons we would ever, ever need to consider that. There's nothing in the current five-year forecast that indicates the need to do that uh, at any point that we can foresee in our data. There is also...
So I just want to stop you there, is even with the loss of ARPA?
The loss of ARPA is, is not, give us, if, if the loss of ARPA were going to lead us to project the need for a tax increase, we'd be projecting it now because of the loss of our, in, in fact, we would have seen that three years ago because the end of ARPA has been in, within the five-year forecast since the 2021 budget, but thinking of this administration, the 22 and 23 and 24 budgets. So we would have, eh, eh, we would have seen that coming some time ago. The, the, the loss of ARPA's funding is not, um, cause to consider a tax increase, so we've not done that. Um, you know, the, um, the continued decline in real estate tax collections, if we remain on course with the current trends driven by the common level ratio, may at some point outside of this five-year window require that conversation. But for reasons that I mentioned in my answer to Councilman Charlin's question, I don't anticipate we'll reach that point because something has got to give, frankly, in that common level ratio conversation, not just for us, but for every taxing jurisdiction in the county. We know that we have a five-year window in which, even if those declines continue to accumulate at the projected rate, it won't require us to consider a tax increase. But if that were to continue beyond that or some other major shift were to happen, then that would be, you know, like something hypothetically that we would have to raise at this, this table at some point. But we don't foresee that. You know, Allegheny County is discussing a tax increase at the moment and the reason that they're doing that is that they are in a systemic deficit. They've been, um, you know, basically in a deficit position for several years. Um, and that has, the loss of ARPA funds has brought that to, uh, brought that to light for them this year, very different than the, the position we're in. Just something that, uh, Patrick mentioned, the value of the five... Just something that Patrick mentioned, the value of the five-year cycle is that we can't hide impending cliffs like that from you all or from the public because we are projecting out future years. When you're producing a budget annually just for the next year and just for next year's revenue projections, you don't have to show, you know, something, a big shift that's happening in the year beyond what you're budgeting for. So our system is designed to send up those alarm bells early.
Are you making projections now for when and if the common level ratio will be changed?
We don't have to because we can adopt a budget based on projections that don't show that change and remain within our statutory requirements as it relates to debt service, reserve fund, and balance. So we, that's another advantage of the five-year plan, is it gives us the luxury, right, of not having to forecast that. We know we've got five years where we can stand to have the current situation prevail.
Yeah, but I'm just curious if there's...
Well, so the way it would, the way it would, the way that would manifest is, again, let's say that sometime next year, there's a resolution to that question. You know, we would then say, when we're back here next year, we've got a, we've got a brand-new set of projections that show those property tax revenue declines flatline, you know, tapering off or showing growth again, right? We're no longer seeing it eaten away at every year by the ratio. It's stabilized at whatever point that resolution has arrived at, and then we would start to expect growth after that. So then we would just provide you with a new forecast that shows a better trend line on that growth, and that would show a different reserve outcome. It might allow us to project different types of new spending in some future year, all of which depends on kind of where, where the number is when it stabilizes. But I think the answer to your question is, are we preparing for that scenario? And what I would say is, we're prepared for that scenario in this proposal because we can show that we will not slip into a deficit even if there isn't a solution. And then if and when a solution has arrived at, that'll allow us opportunities to show positive revenue growth in the out-years and then adjust future spending plans for that. We don't have to prepare for, we don't have to try to predict what that solution will be, when it will come, and how that will solve things. We can take that solution as a bonus, if you will, in whatever next five-year plan we produce after it's arrived at.
And what are you tracking that would be the risk factors? Like, say, I don't know, there's a lot brought up here. And I know that some of this is repetitive, but I just want to hear it, hear it from the questions that I asked. So like, what would be the risk factor of, you know, more real estate, like, you know, I know we can't predict every dollar that's going to be lost through these reassessments.
We can't predict it.
They come through the court, but, you know, what are, can you run through some of the risk factors of why we wouldn't, you know, be in the position that we would have to contemplate? One of those three scenarios of, you know, you know, tax increase, cuts here or the combination?
We can forecast what the annual change in the common level ratio will be if nothing changes, right? So we can see how it would decline. And then based on the past pattern of appeals, we come up with a projected figure about, of what we would expect the appeals to be. That is a projection. They could come in lower or higher than that projection, right? So if we saw far more appeals under, you know, a future, in a future year's common level ratio tranche than we anticipated, then we'd have to react and adjust. But we have no way of predicting, you know, we're confident in the prediction that we have of what's most likely to be the ballpark of what those appeals are in. And we could, so we can't know if one of those years will have more appeals than we projected or fewer than we projected, and so there'll be variation. But, but we're, you know, we're as confident as the data allows us to be in the projected drop that we're showing. Does that answer your question?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it does. I mean, are there other factors than that that you're tracking?
Specifically as it relates to the common level ratio and property tax collection? No. Those are the primary factors. I mean, we are tracking all of the additional court proceedings that relate to this. I mean, there are various filings on this issue. And again, how they turn out could inform what the projection looks like in the future. You know, we're tracking discussions about reassessment. There's, you know, that's not something that's, that would, reassessment would by default address the common level ratio case in its entirety because it would reset the common level ratio. So at any point if that were to occur, we know that that would stop that annual decline. But again, there aren't fixed plans for reassessment and thus nothing to factor into our projections.
And what does the city look like without that adjustment in the common level ratio? Say we're five years out from now. I know I can see the budget, but like...
I mean, five years from...
Or do some of the key, we just pave less roads, we...
Yeah. So, so five years from now, without an adjustment of the common level ratio, you would see the levels of spending that are in this projected five-year plan, which would see us paving less roads, initiating fewer new capital projects, certainly with limited to no ability to increase operating expenditures by adding new staff or new programs, right? It would be, it would be something, we'd be within the confines that are laid out here. Now, again, every year, we adjust within those categories of spending. So in last year's projection, we showed a significant reduction of paving in 2025. We've since been able, as we've gotten closer, to identify ways not to have that happen. So we will, we will work every year as we produce a budget for the following year to minimize the impact of those disruptions to the greatest extent possible. But it would, it would limit our ability to invest in new things and even to require us to, you know, focus on the most core necessities year over year as that occurs.
All right, thanks.
Thank you, Councilman. I'd like to return back to Councilwoman Kail Smith.
Thank you, thank you. I want to first say, I'll start with something positive, okay? I'll say, thank you, I'm glad that you didn't raise taxes because I feel like our residents can't take anymore. I mean, honestly, when I hear the county's comments and that they're coming up with a new plan to raise taxes, 28% instead of 40-some percent, my heart just aches for our residents who can't even afford to make, you know, ends meet day-to-day, let alone additional taxes. So I'll just say, well, honestly, I'm ready to start, I'll tell some, I'm a really good organizer, I'm ready to start a Boston Tea Party, but a Pittsburgh, Allegheny County Tea Party and drop some tea into the Allegheny, into the, one of the rivers. I think we have to do something drastic because we continue, it's costing so much and we're handing money. Tell me what you've done to cut money, tax, you know, the funding that we're spending. Then I would be okay with any, you know, okay, we've done all we can, we have no choice. But when I'm watching grant money on both the city level and the county level go out so much, and I know that there's services that are important, but there are also services that aren't, people that aren't getting money because we're giving it to people that aren't really delivering a lot of services. So I think there's a lot to be said for that whole grant process, both on all levels of government, to be honest with you. But I'm thankful that we're not raising taxes now at this point, and I think because it's such a horrible time for our residents. With that said, I'm glad, also glad we're giving the food bank, because, boy, they're so needed right now. There, I mean, when I go to different events, the lines for distributions are, and when I see people turned away, I mean, it's really something very significant. And so I would think that we're doing some positive things there, so I want to make sure I start with that. The other thing I want to know is, I've gotten this question from somebody who knows a lot more about budgeting, I've mentioned to you before about this. Like, that we're managing the decline of the population versus managing growth for the city. And in particular, there's a screenshot where it talks about losing almost 30,000 jobs in the city at the end, by the end of the decade, and, you know, what ripple effect that might have on the economy. Could you talk to me about that? It's, I think it's number three. It says, it's the forecasted full-time persons working in the city, and it goes down almost 30,000 people.
While Patrick's looking for the exact citation, just, I'll note that we use national data to establish the forecast. So this also comes up in the context of residential development, right? We can, there are many instances where we are aware of projects that are advancing and that may be completed. You know, a downtown reinvestment project, there are seven of them proceeding right now, right? We don't include additional real estate tax revenue from a project that we have strong reason to believe is on its way to completion in the forecast because until it is actually assessed, we don't factor it in. That way, when those things complete, they are additive to the amount of money rather than if they fall through, now we're in a hole. In the same way, if the Department of Labor, the U.S. Bureau of Labor Statistics, or some other entity is projecting a decline in employment taxes in the city of Pittsburgh, we fold that into the forecast regardless of whether we are also pursuing efforts to prevent it because we use standard, rigorous data to inform the forecast, you know, even as we might try and change some of the circumstances. So we can figure out what the source for that is, but it would be irresponsible, in my view, to say, well, we're confident that we're going to do something about that and prevent those losses, so let's not put them in the financial calculations. Because if we fail in those efforts, then we still have to deal with the financial consequences. It's always best, always best to say, you know, if the Bureau of Labor Statistics is forecasting, or whatever that source is, is forecasting a reduction in employment, then that's the worst-case scenario, let's put it in the data. And I don't know, we can find, it's BLS or...
Was that BLS data?
Here, I'll show it to you.
Okay. It's in the forecast, Patrick. It's in there. That's, it's looking at the local service tax. It's like an estimate divided by 52. I can dig into that with Director Gula and we can look further into that.
Thank you. I just, I just would like to know a little bit more about that. The other thing I would like to know is, what projects, capital projects, what projects are you cutting this year? Do you have a list of those projects?
Not currently. Yeah, we don't have any. In terms of projects we're no longer going to do that have been budgeted previously?
That you're delaying or you're not going to do this year, come in '25?
None that I can think of.
So you're going to do Stevens School Building?
Oh, no, that, I mean, in terms of what OMB, excuse me, we don't cut projects. If the, if the department's coming back to us and saying...
I'm coming with the budget overall.
Okay.
You mentioned that there were some projects delayed, some projects that you weren't going to do.
Projects have been delayed.
Yeah.
Yeah, over the past few years due to capacity issues and price increases.
So I'll just tell you, I notice a lot in my district that's not getting done. My district notices a lot. They notice what was done before, they notice what's getting done now, which is pretty much nothing.
If I could, so what Dave is saying, we don't, we don't eliminate, we're not proposing eliminating or reducing funding for projects. When the department, when a project doesn't advance based on cost overruns, unanticipated delays, whatever, what have you, and we check in with them on the project and they say we're X many months behind schedule, we update the budget to reflect the new timeline. We don't, we don't...
I'm curious where those projects are, though.
What, okay, so we can, we can...
I'm curious, where are they? What projects are they?
We can pull a list of those projects that have had their timelines extended, but I just want to be clear, we don't drive the extension. We make the document match the new timeline on the ground.
So I want to be honest with you. There have been projects delayed in my district just since this administration's gotten here. And, and whatever, for whatever reasons, either another thing about the cost or there was something that, with water, there's all sorts of different reasons why. But I noticed things were moving before and they have, they have not been moving as much. So I'm just going to tell you, I'm just going to continue to question this stuff for my district. The other thing I've asked for was some opinions from Mar Dusel. And, you know, we pay them to give us, tell us that we're spending the ARPA funds right, and yet I continue to receive emails saying that they're not, you know, able to give us a legal opinion, they're not able to give...
That one was sent, Councilwoman.
To who?
To you and to the Council President and the clerk.
And what did it say?
That, that particular ARPA expense was well within our loss revenue cause, and then City Council further authorized that contract.
I'm going to see that. I'm going to check it right now.
And to be clear, Mar Dusel can't provide a legal opinion because they're not a law firm, they're an accounting firm. So they work with...
I know, but they're advising us, they're supposed to advise you on behalf of, on behalf of the city. You work for the city, not for the mayor, you work partly for the mayor, but your position is a city position. So they should be ready to answer questions when we have questions.
And they have answered that question. My point is...
I'll bump that in your inbox right now.
Thank you.
My point is that Mar Dusel can provide an accounting opinion, they're, the law firm that works with them can provide a legal opinion. So if there was any reference in any of the correspondence that said they can't provide a legal opinion, it's about what their firm does, but those were provided.
I'm going to read this and then I'll come back to this. And I think overall, you know, we've seen a lot of concerns about the budget in the media and about the Jock Tax and about, you know, other, other things that we're counting in there. And we're saying that we have a surplus, but yet we're saying we're holding off some projects. My thing is for the police, I don't believe that those are the numbers, I don't believe we're going to have more police available next year. I think we also have a lot, they're also still eligible for retirement, and I don't think those numbers are coming in the same. Forty-seven, you know, recruits are not the same as having the people that are eligible to retire. It won't balance out to more people on the streets. I hope it does, but I don't believe it will, and I'll look, I'll look more into that. And then the premium pay, I'm concerned that we're just really undercutting this so severely that we're not going to have people able to respond to events, to build the police community relations. And I'm truly just concerned in general with the, what the direction is with the Police Bureau, you know, in general. I feel like we are pretty much dismantling the Police Department, I've mentioned that before. And even though I continue here, and I'll ask a lot about recruitment when HR's here, but I would like to know what your thoughts are about, about the Bureau and what you think that we can be doing to recruit more people and to do, to do better with that Bureau in general.
We've seen continuous increase in the number of individuals seeking, seeking to enter the academy. And so I think we have seen successful improvement in our recruitment efforts, just starting there, right? That the numbers are going up. I think we could always continue to improve and do more and grow those classes further, right? But the trend thus far has been positive. We're seeing more people each time, which is good. You know, at the same time, we are pursuing, this administration is pursuing shifts like the introduction of more civilian positions to make the most effective use of the officers we do have, or the sworn officer positions that we do have, by not tying them up on desk duty unnecessarily. Again, to grow the number of officers available for frontline functions that only police can do. We've seen tremendous improvement...
I do want to say something about that, about putting more civilians on, because they're starting, I'm starting to see an increase of studies done of civilians working in the Police Bureau and the effects it's having on mental health. And it's not, it's not, so far what I'm seeing is not positive for the actual employees.
Okay.
So I'm just curious, is anybody's even looking at that since we talked so much about mental health and the importance of mental health?
I, I'm not familiar with the studies you're referring to.
It's just new to me.
Sure, no, I understand. So we'd have to, I'd have to look into it to understand also what types of positions they're putting folks in. The types we're talking about are working in the real-time crime center, we already have civilians doing that. This is, you know, it's already a mix of civilians and police. This would just shift that mix more in favor of civilians, so, but we already have civilian analysts there. This would be administrative functions within the zones. I can't, off the top of my head, think of a reason that that is a particularly difficult from a mental health perspective position, but again, something worth looking into. And then other really office functions, right? So... So I'm, I'm, no one has raised us a concern about mental health implications for the types of positions that we're looking to put civilians into, you know, like crime scene, evidence processing, most cities do that with civilians, but I, that is the type of job where I guess, I certainly can see the potential. Happy to look into it, but not, the, the mental health effects on the civilians themselves is not something frankly that's, I'm, I'm aware of us having discussed, so happy to look at that.
Yeah, it's honestly, it was nothing I looked into, somebody actually called me and told me, gave me the information. It wasn't, I was looking for something.
Yeah.
But they're saying it's, they're actually doing some research on it.
Okay.
And so I'll be happy to share that when I get, when I do receive that.
Okay.
I'm going to read over this Meyer Dusel thing. I apologize if they sent that, because I was managing, they did not send it, I had the email saying that they couldn't give a legal opinion, that was all I, all I had. I think that's it for me, though. But my concern is also with the grant funding, I keep talking about this, is that I'd like to know that we're having some conversations with the foundations about funding things like Stop the Violence, like the food justice stuff, things that we know that people need and, and want, but yet maybe, you know, there's a better way to fund it so that we're getting even. And honestly, sometimes, they could probably fund things more than we can, in a greater number, so.
Don't disagree with you there, and I think in general, our, our trajectory, right, has been more toward either spending, thinking about Stop the Violence, for example, right? A lot of that spending remains internal, right, for positions and things that we do ourselves. We've also, to the greatest extent possible, moved things that were previously grants, where we're giving you, giving someone money, to a fee-for-service relationship where they have a defined scope of work that they're providing for us as a contractor, and we're paying them to do it, right? So then instead of giving someone a grant to conduct a community violence initiative of their own devising, we're, we're paying them as a contractor to provide violence reduction services on behalf of the city, which gives us a much greater degree of control on the spending and documentation on the outcomes. So, so we've moved significantly in that direction. And I just use...
And you have reports enough of those, right?
That's correct. And so what I'm saying is, we've moved significantly in that direction, I'm only using Stop the Violence as an example. In all the places where we've been doing grants, we're trying to move more in that direction. One big exception is of course CDBG, where the rules are dictated by the federal government, we're more or less a pass-through, a lot of those are grants.
I'm letting him go today, okay? Because I already, I give him a hard time every time.
I, yeah.
I'm trying to leave him out of this conversation.
No, no, and I mean, and, and your, your questions are warranted. My point is, the way in which CDBG is structured, all the, coming all the way down from the federal government, is they're intended to be grants. So those we more or less, in many cases, have to make as grants, based on the rules that are passed on to us, not rules of our own choosing. But in, in the things that are local in their nature, we're, we're moving in directions that I think are consistent with your concerns.
Okay, and I'm just going to end it with something positive, I appreciate all the work that you all do, it's really difficult when you don't have a lot of money to work with, and there's a lot of need and a lot of requests. So for that part, I'll end it on the positives. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Any others for second round? Okay, I'll just, oh, Councilmember, oh, okay. I'll just give a couple of remarks. I don't think, maybe there's some, some items to respond to, but I want to say, I've appreciated sitting on the Financial Task Force with many of you, it's been helpful for me to be able to understand exactly where we are and get kind of the, as I mentioned to the controllers, team this morning, regular updates. As Finance and Law Chair, it really is helpful for me to understand where we are at any given moment throughout the year. And I think it's allowed us to front-load a lot of our difficult conversations about the budget, so that we're not having those difficult conversations just in this month. I mean, we are, but we're grappling with a lot of it, you know, on the front end this year. And I, I know that initially I had really spoken both in private and in public about needing to tighten our belt and to, you know, exercise even more austerity this year. And I want to say, I think that next year's budget reflects that to the extent possible, right? Barring more drastic measures like retirement buyouts and things that have other unintended negative consequences in other ways, like we're, we're doing a lot with a little for next year's budget. That said, I, you know, echo others in still believing that we do need to continue to find additional revenue sources. I think we're all in agreement there, there are non-tax revenue sources that we have to continue to, like, zealously go after, to the extent possible. And then, something that I haven't heard as much, I know we're doing a little bit of, but leveraging of our partnerships for cost savings. We're doing some of that with the county, we have, you know, increased partnership with the county, especially with DHS and the funding that they receive from the state, that's great. But I'm thinking even further when it comes to, even with the school district, leveraging for, you know, like renovations of buildings, is, are there, is there a timing matchup that where we can procure, you know, roofing contractors for a set of buildings that we're all, you know, realizing savings in, et cetera, et cetera? Like, that's the line of thinking I have. How much savings that actually results in, I'm not sure, but it's where I'd love for, you know, our collective heads to be in for the, for the upcoming years, knowing that it's going to be a couple of tight years, and recognizing that we get pretty close to the ten percent fund balance in the out-years. So I said a lot, that's all I have to say, but if there's any response from any of you on any of that, I'm happy to hear.
I, I think that the partnership with the county around DHS funding and how that relates to Parks and Rec and OCHS is, it's a novel concept for us, frankly. It's not something the city has a history of doing in quite that way. I think it provides a valuable end in, in and of itself, but also a valuable learning opportunity for other types of partnerships we could explore along the lines of some of what you've proposed. Some of, some of which we've thought about but not been able to sort of bring into reality, and some of which are interesting new ideas that I'd love to talk about more. So we're very open to identifying new and additional ways to move in that direction. We have a very willing partner in DHS that has allowed us to move forward with this one first, and learn from the experience. But I, where there's a willing partner, we'd be happy to explore other opportunities to do that.
Great, thank you. Anything further from members? Councilmember Warwick?
Yeah, I just wanted just, back to the topic of grants that Councilman Charlin brought up, I wanted to ask, in terms of match, so I do understand, and I hadn't heard that, I hadn't understood that before, about this idea of going for grants for a current project, and then if you get it, great, using that money for something new. That's, that seems like a smart way to go. However, when it does come to these matching funds, it, it seems like if there is a grant opportunity out there, I mean, have there ever been thoughts about, I think it was Councilman Charlin's idea of sort of like a grants, or maybe it was someone at DOMI, I don't remember, but like a grants trust fund, like a, just a pool of money where we could just pull from for matching grants, whether it be something small, or something that we could just quickly be like, ooh, this grant's a rush, we want to apply for it, we need the matching fund, and we have this, this sort of pot of money that we can do that with.
We, after the conversation, I think that was at the DOMI meeting, you know, we had some internal chats about that, and, you know, it is an interesting idea. I would love to maybe partner with some of the foundations to have more access for something like that, because otherwise it's, it's the same zero-sum game where we would have to pull from Pago or from, you know, the operating budget. You can't really do a revolving fund for bond projects.
Right.
So you have to look at the right flavor of money, and we have to make sure it's okay from that front, but then it's, you know, if you do that, then what is it that we're not funding, if we do that? But it is interesting, and we're still exploring it.
And on the foundation front, just to clarify, there have been individual instances where we've been able to secure foundation funding to serve as the local match for a particular project. But that's the same exercise in sort of identifying the opportunity and then searching up, sort of scrounging up the money to meet the requirements. Something like what your, the council has put on the table would be sort of funds waiting in reserve, ready to go, so that they could be called upon immediately in an instance like that. Starting something like that is, is the challenge, right? Because we'd have to identify something else we're not spending those funds on in order to park them, if you will, in the trust fund. And so then there's some other project that we're not funding in order to have those available, or some other source that we're diverting there. So it is, it is doable, it's something that we absolutely can explore. We would just be having a conversation about trade-offs if and when we did it.
And it depends also on the specific grant, you know, some grants, if we are going to do an application and we know that there's a match, we have an answer within weeks, a month. There are some state grants where it took eleven months to get a response. So we don't want to just sit and hold up funds unnecessarily, but a lot of times departments, if it's, we know it's a short turnaround, they're able to, to move it, and then if we have an answer and we have to use a local match, cool, we'll move it. And if we're not awarded, then it kind of reverts back. So we've gotten more flexible, you know, DOMI, DPW, they've been good partners.
And then also with regard to the grants, so are we, maybe this is a question for the grants team, so it, it sounds like, you know, we talk about starting projects that we don't then have the bandwidth to actually do. When we apply for grants, I mean, can we include project, like the cost of a staff member, of a new project manager, or whatever?
Sometimes, and sometimes no.
Right, so for any grant application, they do a very rough budget of what, what all that would entail. And some things are allowed by the grant, sometimes personnel is not an expense that's allowed, allowed by the grant, it just depends on what it's for.
Okay.
And then, once we were awarded that grant, we would work through a more formal budget process. That would determine exactly what, like, pay level, or, you know, like benefit costs that have to be accounted for, too. There are some other grants where some of the departments have opted to do the match in in-kind services, so that would be part of your salary that you have to track, you have to track your hours that you're applying to that grant, so that we can, say, ten percent of Councilperson Warwick's salary goes towards this bridge grant. So we would divide up all of your costs and apply it to that. And there might be three different team members on different levels that are doing that at different percentages. Some include everyone from the director at like one percent, Jeff, you know, Jeff Galligan at three percent, and on down to the more project manager at maybe fifty percent of their time. And that gets our in-kind match for, for those grants. So there's various different ways to do it. And the grants team has the capacity to write grants for just about anything that a department wants, but that doesn't mean that the city workforce or finances can, can support that project at that current time. They're also pretty keen on the, the cycle of grants for application, so that they know that a grant window is open again in two years for a project that is on the horizon, that maybe in this cycle, they push towards like the other departments that have active projects now, knowing that in two years they can apply again for an act of, that project that is not currently active but will be active at that time. So they kind of work with the directors in, in big picture term of what they can, if they get this money, can they actually spend it for something that will be beneficial to the city, and beneficial to the funder who's ultimately giving us that money. There are, you know, several times historically where we've designed projects that we never have any intention of moving forward with afterwards, because we got a grant for design, and that's great, but is that really an efficient use of all of the funding?
Yeah, no, I definitely agree on that, and it also puts expectation, you know, with public, where you do like this public process for a project, you design it, then you never do it, it's like, whatever happened with that? No, I understand that.
That sounds like district, too.
And that's, that's why we've tried to shift gears towards having the entire, having a plan for the funding of the entire lifecycle of the project, so that we're not creating expectations at the design phase that something will be completed when we haven't budgeted for the construction. Better to not initiate that design discussion until we have some reasonable expectation to give people that it will advance. Many, many of the challenging projects fall into the category of ones that were, had those initial phases funded without a full funding plan, and so we've been scraping together money cyclically to sort of keep it limping along, and it takes a very, very, very long time to complete, because once we conduct that design phase, we've made a commitment that it will be completed, but we were perpetually behind the curve in terms of pulling the money together.
No, yeah, I, I understand that, I appreciate that. I've been in that situation myself, and, right, with numerous projects, and it's, it's nice to finally be able on some of those to say, hey, this is finally budgeted, like it's actually happening, and people are like, wow, you know, so that, that is nice. And then also to not start projects that then you don't end up doing, because I know there's lots of communities that have had, you know, they've been like, well, you know, some, you know, they, we've been talking about this playground, or that thing, or whatever for years, and, you know, so. And then just one last question, and I apologize if this was already said. Could you clarify, because, you know, we hear a lot about the, you know, the financial health of the city, but at the same time, like our bond rating is good or better, could you explain that for me, so just so I, I understand?
So the primary factor that the ratings agencies evaluate when providing a bond rating are the current status of our finances and the underlying strength of the economy that supports those finances, right? So, so they make it an evaluation based on what are, you know, what are our books look like now, what are our financial management practices, and how do those give confidence in our ability to maintain a healthy, balanced budget? And then what are the expectations of the market that we're drawing taxes from, that it will remain stable, improve, decline, things of that nature, right? And then, and then that is what they produce, a rating of our ability to repay, right? Now, so there, the reason I say that the underlying economy is so important in their ratings is, part of their calculation rests on the fact that, you know, if we were to experience a significant financial challenge, we could, to Councilman Wilson's question, raise taxes to address the shortfall. And so they're really looking, they, they do want to know what our financial management practices are, so that they can see how we would identify a challenge, and then how we would have time and ability to react. But they also just want to know is the tax base underneath the city strong enough to support it if those things happen? So our, either, in, in two of the three instances, we've seen continued, you know, ratings, or ratings have not declined or gone up, they've remained consistent, one of the ratings agencies has improved our rating recently. And it's a combination of their evaluation of our financial management practices and procedures, the underlying strength of the economy, and frankly, the current status of the, the books is really the, I would, I would characterize as the third most important factor. They really want to see how we, from a policy perspective, manage our money, how we make decisions, and then how strong is the economy that, that sits underneath that.
And what is our rating compared to, I don't know, other, do we know, compared to other cities of our size, or?
Off the top of my head, no, it's hard to, to compare two other cities, just because, you know, we would never compare ourselves to New York City, because they...
Well, no, no, I meant like, right.
They're taking out billions of dollars a year in bond, but we can, we can dig into that. The other thing I'd flag is, you know, we had a meeting at the end of October with one of the rating agencies, we have two lined up this week actually with the other two, so we're always in constant communication with them.
That's all for me, thanks.
Thank you. Second round, Councilwoman Kell Smith?
Just real briefly, when you mentioned about having a, an account just to use for private dollars, I think Bill Paduto had one, but you, you canceled, it was like, I think a hundred thousand that was supposed to go towards it.
The, I think you're referring to the one Pittsburgh or one PGH?
I can't remember name.
Yeah, so that was, was not an account on the city's books. That was an independent nonprofit entity, not, not responsible to council, not responsible to any city staff.
There's a lot of things not responsible to council right now, but go ahead, don't get me started on that one.
They wouldn't come before you and have a budget hearing about their money, is my point.
The controller wouldn't audit that.
The controller wouldn't audit their books, they would have no accountability to the city as a, as a entity. And yes, that we...
But this account that you're talking about not would?
If it were an internal city special revenue account, yes.
Right, so my understanding of the proposal that's been floated here is a city trust fund or special revenue account, meaning inside the budget, responsive to the mayor, council, the controller, and all the ways of reporting and allocation of funds, that would just be able to be tapped for matches. Very different than what you're referring to, which was a nonprofit outside of government.
So the other thing is, when you talk about the nonprofits, the forty, forty, we keep hearing about forty million dollars that was promised to the city, could you address that at all?
Yeah, there, there were...
The reports we're hearing, we don't know the reality.
Correct. So that number is based on a number that was published in a press release by the prior administration, the vast... by the prior administration, the vast majority of which was in-kind, meaning that for, some of the nonprofits who agreed to participate were pledging spending that they were otherwise going to do towards their contribution. Others made commitments, but again, they were commitments to pay into a nonprofit that sat outside of city government and wasn't under the control of the city government, but rather under this one PGH fund. So it, you could total up the pledges that were made to $40 million. That was not $40 million financial contribution to the city, to the city, to be spent through the budget on city projects or city expenditures. It was $40 million in charitable pledges of activity they would engage in, which is very different than the conversation that we have tried to advance.
And are you still having conversations?
Yes.
You are? Okay. And then I just want to end with the RAD funding. That's typically applied for by OMB. I think Pete and I, Director McDevitt and I, talk about this all the time. It's typically applied for by OMB with, well, some desire from DPW or City Parks.
Yeah, we submit the, we combine the identified projects that are primarily within DPW and parks, and submit the application because of the, the way the revenue enters the RAD trust fund and then is pushed out. So, so we are, we play a role in that procedurally. But it is supporting, some of it is DPW operating funds for folks who are working in RAD parks. Some of it is maintenance funding, equipment, and some of it is capital projects undertaken by DPW in RAD parks.
And we do get some in my district, but I do want to say, because, you know, somebody's always, I told you about this before, always saying we don't get RAD funding, you know, in our side of town, but we do.
Yes.
And it is you and DPW and City Parks that applies for. City Council doesn't apply for grants. It's not a function of City Council. So I just want people to understand.
And this year, we received more than the bare minimum for the operating and capital. You know, RAD is required to give us certain amounts, and we have received from their board. Their board has to approve requests more than than our minimum, which is exciting. And like you said, you know, all of that spending has to occur within the RAD designated parks. Emerald View, of course, is in District Two.
And that's how we pay for our park ranger, park rangers up there.
The rangers that are in those parks, yes.
Yeah. So I'm just saying, they do, they do receive it in multiple ways.
Where the money goes, where RAD funding goes, is based on where the RAD parks are. So there are, there are districts that don't have any RAD funds. That's because there aren't, isn't a RAD park in that district.
Right. I'm just saying, people, you know, put things on social, and everybody just starts listening, but the reality is not what they're saying.
And it's confusing, right? You know, we can't expect members of the public to have all these details in their heads all the time.
Sometimes I think they ain't confusing intentionally, but okay.
That's, that certainly happens too, right? I agree with you about that. But yes.
That's why sometimes I try to give people a chance to say what's right here at the table.
And we don't inherently control how RAD divvies up their funds, at the end of the day, because we are competing with assets across the county, both in and out of the city.
Right. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you. Anything further from members? Okay. Instead of calling for a recess, we're just gonna roll right into the mayor's budget meeting. So anyone here who is joining for the mayor's can can remain at the table or come up to the table. And I will turn it over to Director McDevitt.
Thank you.
To, tell us more about the mayor's budget.
Thank you, Councilperson Strasburg. All right, this time, I'm reading-
I apologize. I'm getting the signal that we are going to actually need a five-minute recess to make sure that everyone is here from the mayor's office, so. We're good? Okay. Good afternoon. Take your time to settle in, because we're still hearing from our, our budget director. So do we have everyone here that is needed? Okay, wonderful. Thank you. Please proceed, Director McDevitt.
All right. The mission of the Office of the Mayor is to provide leadership, strategic direction, and administrative oversight to all aspects of city government operations, and to develop and implement policy reflective of the goals and priorities of the citywide community. The Office of the Mayor contains the following offices: the Executive Office, Office of Equal Protection, Office of Communications, Office of Neighborhood Services, Office of Business Diversity, Office of Immigrant and Refugee Affairs, Office of Workforce Development, Youth and Education, and the Office of Financial Empowerment. In the 2025 budget, there is a total of 40 full-time positions. That is a decrease of three from 2024. And there's a number of mid-year swaps that are outlined below that come to a savings of just about $150,000. Overall, there is a decrease in the personnel budget in the mayor's office by $225,000, or 7%. And a quick summary of non-personnel changes, overall, there is a $47,731 increase. That includes a $55,602 increase for professional and technical services, $3,000 decrease in property services, about $1,25,000 decrease for other services, and $7,579 increase in supplies. And lastly, the lone capital project deliverable for the Office of the Mayor is for the mayor's public service grants in this CDBG funding.
Thank you very much. I will turn it over to Chief Sweetley and-
Sweetley.
Chiefs.
To our, to our, Chief of Staff Jake Wheatley, Chief Felicity Williams, and the floor is yours for any kind of comments you'd like to make before council questions. Sorry, it's been a long afternoon. It's been a long day. All good.
No, we definitely appreciate your time, and we want to thank you all for the opportunity to come before you and talk about this year's budget and our vision. And I just want to begin by just saying, when we came in under Mayor Gani, his commitment was to really try to make this city work, because what we heard all throughout the time we were visiting with our citizens and residents, was that they really wanted the core functions of city government to work for them. And we wanted to make sure it worked for everyone, to make sure this city lived up to the value system and the commitments for every one of our citizens. And when we came in, a lot of people laughed at us when we said we wanted to really concentrate on safe welcoming and to make sure everyone had a opportunity to thrive, and that those who were furthest away from the seats and tables of power really had their voices heard in the, in this administration. And what we tried to do is take a step back from everything and really lay out what was working in the city, what was working well in the city, and what are the things that we need to do a better job in the city. And we looked at our internal staff. And when we came in, as you all know, with you all's help, we tried to really concentrate on those things, those core service things. And we tried to really be real with ourselves and transparent with ourselves and the city about how the operations inside of the Office of the Mayor, how we can really construct it in a way to meet those objectives. How do we meet the objective of making the city work and make it work for everyone? And how do we do it in a safe, welcoming, and the opportunities for people to thrive? And so I think what you will hear from Felicity, who's way more technical and way more on top of all of these avenues than I am, what you will see is, we tried to really do that in a way of respecting taxpayers' resources. We tried to be very clear with where we were spending those resources. So you'll see in some of these numbers, a jump. When we first came in, there was a decrease from the prior administration in the budget of the Office of the Mayor. But they were positions that were reporting to the mayors or were essentially under the mayor's domain that was in different departments. And we came in and we said, hey, instead of doing it that way, we want to pull them all together, and we want to be very clear. We also, the mayor had a vision of making sure we had an office that was really set up, and with you all's help, we were able to do this, Office of Equal Protection, that was set up to really be the compliance, to be the oversight, to be the office, to really help protect our citizens and our workers. And so you'll see some of that in this office, in this budget that we're putting forth. And then you'll see, we, we've tried to pull together, Felicity, again, will talk about the disparity study and what that means for our city and our compliance stuff, to make sure people have real protections for our contracting policies, our diversity and equity goals. You'll see some stuff where we've gone through, and I know Felicity has this wonderful presentation, but you all have been here long enough, and we weren't gonna take an hour walking you through a presentation, but we certainly can do that for you. But I'm trying to save you, Councilwoman, you know, I didn't want to do that. We, we, we will, we will supply you with this, and, but we wanted to just really give you an opportunity to ask us whatever questions you have. But again, I just wanted to take that moment, just to give you a perspective of where we were going in our thought process and how we wanted to configure the mayor's office to help us meet those objects, objectives and those goals. So with that being said, I'll turn it over to-
Absolutely. Thank you, Chief. Just to build a little bit upon what Chief Wheatley talked about, as he mentioned, when we came into office in 2022, you guys know that the budget was decreased from the 2021, both the mayor's office and the Office of Equity, both in overall and personnel. As you heard Chief Wheatley mention, one of the things that we did in our first budget in 2023 was bring together those offices under the mayor's office. So bringing together that staff from the Office of Equity, mayor's office, and Office of Immigrant and Refugee Affairs, all under the mayor's office, since they were being directed by the mayor's office. So yes, our budget has grown on paper, but a large portion of that was revenue-neutral moves in 2023 and 2024. What we have proposed here in 2025 continues to build upon that work in 2023 and 2024. And I wanted to make one note that although, again, on paper, the reduction only appears to be about $100,000, that is because there is revenue that we will be receiving from some of our public partners to support the disparity study, that we are then spending. So it is increasing our revenue, and it is in our expenses that's a wash. So if you remove that from our budget, we actually have an over $500,000 decrease, which is an over 10% decrease in the mayor's office budget from 2024 to 2025. And so we are taking, obviously, the lean fiscal years very seriously, as we have since we came into office, and have identified places, both in personnel and non-personnel, where we are able to make those cost savings, where we have realized and learned what is the best staffing configurations for us to achieve the vision and goals of the mayor's office. And so with that, we are happy to answer, as Chief Wheatley said, not keeping you all here through a long presentation, we're happy to get right to questions that you all might have about our budget.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. And if you do, if you send it to us via email, speak for myself, I will look at it. I think other council members will look at it and make sure that to follow up with any additional questions. But if it's all right, unless anyone has time constraints, we'll, we'll go with the same order as before, with Councilmember Warwick starting us off.
Yeah, thank you. So I do want to start off by saying, the Neighborhood Services Team, this team, I, I mean, I can only speak for, for myself and my district, but I know that having, having somebody from the mayor's office consistently at community meetings, board meeting, you know, whatever these meetings are going on in the various communities has been, it's been noted, and it's been helpful. People appreciate it. They also, I, I've gotten very positive feedback about the City and the Streets Initiative. I know the one that was in Hazelwood that was very meaningful to people. They really, really liked just seeing the city come out and sort of, you know, in that neighborhood and just kind of, you know, being there and having the mayor there and just having that, that whole, it was very nice. It was very nice, very appreciated. One thing with the, with the Neighborhood Services Team is I'm, I'm wondering if there isn't perhaps some synergies that might, that we might be able to find between Neighborhood Services and city planning? Because, you know, we have like a neighborhood planner, and sometimes both of those people will be at the meetings, you know, and, and if there isn't a way to kind of figure out what those two roles are and what the, you know, and I assume it would be neighborhood, and it might be neighborhood by neighborhood, right? It might, I don't know if you have any thoughts about that.
Yeah, we, we've been very much trying to figure out how we can better align the engagement strategy for our city departments, all of our city departments. Now, I will say, for city planning, they have a special, unique need and out, and a kind of a focus. So some of their neighborhood planners are really trying to help with the technical planning of development in spaces in the neighborhoods, where our Neighborhood Services folk, they're less on the technical support side of things. They're more on, how can we make sure, again, that the things that you want and need in your neighborhoods from services or from government and general city government, that you're getting the types of information and support and resources, and that that information is coming back in, in a way that we can move and to be able to have some impact. And I will say, after our first director, many of you know, was just an outstanding person to really help us set that shop up. And we, with your help, again, we grew her department, that department, and really, we're continuously learning more about ways to make it work, make it work better, and to make it more seamless. So that is something we've been talking about and think, trying to figure out. But I just want to, there is a distinction from a technical perspective of what the city planners are trying to accomplish with the neighborhoods, and from where Neighborhood Services coordinators are trying to do in the neighborhoods.
Yeah, and I also wanted to mention, just for Neighborhood Services, I guess, so this is something I said at the city planning, which it might be helpful for each of the Neighborhood Services folks to kind of come up with, like, the goals for the neighborhoods that they're serving, you know, and again, and connect with city planning, to kind of come up with like a, you know, what can we do together for this particular neighborhood, given the needs? I think too, and the other thing that that Neighborhood Services has been extremely helpful with, I know not just for my, but just for other departments, is with notifying residents. So for example, if there's going to be a public meeting, like about a traffic calming thing, or about a project, or whatever, like going through and actually literally knocking the doors of the people who are in the immediate area and making sure that that, that has been very helpful for a couple of projects in my district. So I hope that that, that continues. The other thing I wanted to touch on, and I'm gonna have to go after this, is, is communications. So, you know, you know, we talk a lot about community, and I understand, it's very hard to communicate, like, as the city, whether you're a department, or a council member, or whoever, it's very hard to kind of communicate with your constituents. And of course, for you guys, your constituents are the whole city. You know, it's hard these days, especially with, you know, with our, our paper, you know, with the Post Gazette, you know, just being in this ongoing labor dispute. It's very, you know, it just, it puts all of us in a difficult, or I'd say most of us, some of us, in a difficult position, because it is sort of the paper of record, and you, you know, but we're not talking to them. And I know that that is an issue for a lot of, a lot of constituents don't understand that, right? They don't understand that, that we are making a conscious decision not to talk to this newspaper, because they aren't, you know, doing right by their workers. I don't know if there's a, I don't know if there's an answer on navigating that, but I do feel sometimes that it feels like communications sometimes are reactive, you know, which is normal. I mean, that you have, you know, you react to what's in the news, but I, it would be nice to see communications that are a little more proactive and, and with, with larger reach, right? Just about, and not even, you know, whether it's good stuff that the city's doing, whether it's projects that are happening, whether it's, you know, the bridge close, whatever it is, right? Just stuff that's going on. I don't know if you have any thoughts about that. I know that we don't have a comms director right now. So just some thoughts about that for the coming year.
For sure. So we are continually trying to figure out what are all of the different avenues and best ways to reach our residents. We think about the role of communicating with our residents, not just limited to the communications team. So we approach that also thinking about the role in communicating with our residents that Neighborhood Services, as you brought up, for example, has. We have approached this from, you know, social media, from relationships with our press and press releases. We now have a newsletter that has over 5,000 subscribers and is consistently growing. We are utilizing engagements- We now have a newsletter that has over 5,000 subscribers and is consistently growing. Um, we are utilizing engagements, um, through our Engage PGH website as well. Uh, we are doing, you know, stakeholder briefings on topics that we know people are, are interested in. Um, but we are continuing to explore ways in which we can really get the message out there about the good work that the city is doing. And I think as Chief Wheatley mentioned earlier, in, in other areas, that is somewhere where we are working to continue to figure that out.
Okay. And then, um, also on the point of communication, so that's the external.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and then another, and I know, well, again, I don't speak, I'll speak for, for myself and, and, um, you know, internal communications, uh, sometimes, you know, maybe, and I, and I know that we have like council leadership and that's, and that's a good system, right? That generally speaking, that is a, that is a, an efficient system, but at the same time, you know, whether it's intergovernmental, inter-city, inter-governmental, like council mayor's office, or whether it is inter-governmental county, city, right? PennDOT or, you know, state, um, and kind of keeping everyone abreast of, in all of those different areas about what we are all talking about together. I feel like there could be improvement there because I, there's, there are certainly times, you know, I think, um, the, you know, Councilman Charlin just held a briefing about the, about the winter plan for the, the unhoused, right? But that, that type of thing, like the 500 for 500 and what's the city, how are we working together? And if we all kind of just knew that, it would be a lot easier, I shouldn't speak for others, it would be easier for me to then talk to my constituents about like the broader s- city, county, state, this is how we're all working together. I don't know if you.
We'll take any suggestions you all may have, but we, we believe, and I'm speaking from my own personal engagement with prior administrations, being a state rep for over 19 years. This, in my opinion, has been one of the most, um, assertive and, uh, and trying to outreach with partners externally. We have a, a bi-monthly meeting with our.
State and federal partners.
State and federal partners.
Mm-hmm.
We've had, um, a bi-weekly engagement with council leadership to try to, um, make sure we're communicating priorities with council. We, um, do, uh, a, a direct conversation with some of our regional partners, external partners, both from, um, the private sector, sector as well as governmental bodies, trying to outline not only our internal vision and process, but try to get, uh, you know, a, a shared understanding of things that we would like to do together. I mean, one of the examples of that is what happened downtown with the conversion. Um, we were able to, from a citywide leadership standpoint, get everyone on one, um, accord and go to the state and have everybody singing the same song and, uh, moving in the same direction. So of course we can learn more from that process, um, and we are open to any ideas of how better to align and communicate it. But we are trying very, to be very intentional to make sure, um, that we are keeping everyone in a loop and, uh, that we're trying to move together.
Just to build on that a little bit, I think it is important to, because it's, and I don't think you're making this, uh, assertion, Councilwoman, but I've heard others um, conflate kind of the role of our communications team as being, uh, internal, responsible for some of those internal communications. And they are, their role is responsibility for external communications. We handle those internal communications through some of the avenues that you mentioned, through council leadership, um, through briefings. Um, something that we've also been more intentional about doing is, is scheduling more briefings with, uh, council members. You guys know that, for example, with the Gender Equity Commission ordinance amendments, we did council briefings with you all. Um, so trying to be really intentional about doing that proactively. Um, and then as Chief Wheatley mentioned, um, our state and federal partners have expressed with us that they, this is the most engagement that they have had from an administration. Um, and that are, we are communicating with them frequently.
Okay. Yeah. So that, I mean, I, I just think maybe, um, I mean, I'm thinking just from my office, right? Even, even just setting up between just like my constituent services person and the neighborhood services, you know what I mean? So that everyone was like, okay, what's going on like in Greenfield? Then, you know, what do we need to, and that way you know, we know.
We would love that.
Yes, absolutely. We would love to do that.
Um, and also just, I think maybe just, I don't know, just like if there's anybody, again, I, I don't know who it would be on the staff, but if there's anybody whose kind of role it is to just sort of, you know, make sure that checking in from time to time with, with the members, even if they're not on leadership, right? We're all kind of, we're all got a million things going on and just to check in and be like, hey, you know, is there any, any concerns, any things, you know, I think that that might help, help with the, you know, relationship building and whatnot.
Just for clarity, that, that person, your, your contact, so to speak, person who is building and continuously uh, to strengthen a relationship is Director Pollock, Deputy Mayor Jake Pollock. So he is your, your person, um, and, you know, we'll definitely talk to him, but that is your, that is council's person for the things that we do in our administration.
Yeah. And I mean, that's great. And of course I, I'm a, I'm a huge fan of Director Pollock. Uh, I do feel sometimes that, uh, the weight of the world is on his shoulders, you know what I mean? And it is a lot for one person and there's nine of us.
But there's nothing more greater than for him to have a relationship that works with you all.
Well, that may be, but he may, I mean, he might also be able, you know, you know, have, have a little, you know, a, a little help in that department, even with just sort of.
And we're willing to help.
Because I always hesitate, I mean, not hesitate, I don't hesitate to call, but I'll call him, but it's like, I just know that he has so much that he has to do, that like, it's got to be really important for me to, for me to call up Jake, Jake Pollock and be like, hey, whatever, whatever. But it would be nice if there were someone where I felt a little bit just like, oh, this is just like a little thing, like I just thought of this and I just want to kind of FYI.
We, we talked about this before and, and, and we're all here to support each other in the job, uh, to, to try to get the city, get you all and our residents what they need. So either one of us are available to help. If you have a issue or you have a concern and it's a small thing and you want something in your district, you, you, either one of us at this table in, in support of, and that's, that's also with Chief Frank and, um, our, um, other, um, senior leadership team. Any one of us are available to help you, um, with any other issues that you have.
Okay. Great. Well, I need to run apologies. So thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilwoman Kail Smith.
Thank you. I, I have to ask, this is the mayor's budget hearing.
Yeah.
Where is he?
Uh, he wasn't, I, I was told that it was me and, um, Deputy, um, Chief, that you all wanted at the table.
That was the communication we received from the clerk's office.
They said make sure Chief Wheatley is here. If you said make sure the mayor was here, guess what? Uh, we would have had the mayor and not Chief Wheatley. That's fine with us.
Not that I don't want you here. I, I'm actually glad you are here, but I, but I do think that this is the mayor's budget hearing and this is the first time I've ever seen a hearing without the mayor here for his budget meeting to talk about.
Wasn't communicated directly to us, but you know, I'll blame it on myself. So, you know, it's.
Yeah. And they usually do come in with a lot of people, and actually I think I vaguely remember all the directors being here too when they, in the, in this background when they were.
We'll make sure next year during this time, we'll have them here.
Oh, be my last one.
Not the last one, continuation.
My last one.
Oh, your last one. Okay.
That's my last one. We'll have a party.
No doubt.
But anyway, I do want to say that, I mean, he, he should be here, that it is his budget hearing. And I would like to find out why that was communicated by the clerk's office. So I'll send an email too. Um.
That would have been on me, not the clerk's office, just to be clear. If that was an oversight, that was my oversight.
I don't know why you would make that oversight because we had an issue last year.
I, I know. That's why I'm looking into it right now.
I, I was gonna say, just for the record, he hasn't attended in the past either. So.
No, he was here last, we weren't going to have the hearing last year if he wasn't here.
He was not here last year.
No, he was here last year, but then he left. He and Jake, Director Wheatley had to, or Chief Wheatley had to leave.
It's an overlook and I, and you know, I. Again, it's, we'll, we'll take, we'll take it. No problem.
And I also know that, I thought you were going to say it was because there was a death in his family, because I heard that too.
There was one, but yeah.
Okay. Well, that's what the answer was I was expecting you, but anyway, um, so I, I just want to say real quickly, when you talk about the, I, I do want to say, I think Paul Scott's, yeah, really personable. I think he's, he's been helpful. Um, we do have, uh, in our district, we have several community groups. One, the one I have is the, the Greater West End Alliance. We don't have speakers. We don't have people in the mayor's office. We don't have any political people there. We never do, but we do have a speaker series and as soon as they open the West End Senior Center, we'll have them there again. But, um, and I did tell them, only if we call you do you come to the, our meetings. We don't just let people just come to them because we just want to keep them apolitical, to be honest with you. I started before I was political, so like 20 years.
The only challenge to that though, Councilwoman, is, um, we get so many, um, inquiries from people from your district asking, why isn't the mayor in our neighborhood or at our meetings? And the only response we can give to them right now, and this is why we directed the, uh, Acting Director Scott to start going, is, um, because we haven't been invited, but that's not a satisfactory, um, response to people who still want the mayor to be able to come in, hear from their citizens about what their issues are.
Yeah. That's, that's only one meeting. There's several other groups that, and they're there for those. So if they're asking that question, it's of why he's not there at an event or some, I know what they're asking. I was there when they asked it and said that he wasn't present at a Sheridan thing. And I said, this is the one neighborhood he actually has been. So I actually said at the time when they were saying it, he had been there, I think at the time, three or four times already. And so he was, so the person who asked that was misinformed, is all I'm gonna say.
Okay.
Um, but for that one meeting, we, we, they're by invitation and we're not checking.
We would love to be invited though. We, we, we don't, we don't be, we're not political when we come to the meetings. We're more on our governmental side. We want to make sure the, the mayor has direct hearing from what citizens are saying.
That's actually the largest group we have in our district.
That's why he's been very visible and trying to get to meetings. Uh, he himself tried to get to them, but he sends his people to as many of them as he can.
Well, I will say that the ones that Paul Scott has been in attendance, um, he's been very kind and very, very helpful. Um, and, and same with, um, I think your name is Crisera.
Crisera.
Yeah. We love her. So I just want to say, and there, there's quite, I mean, you have a few that, that come to our, some of our meetings. That's just the one that we don't have any, we don't have anybody. Um, and I do want to say that I, I saw something on here that you're, are you cutting out a, um, position? I thought I saw for, I'm trying to find it. Let me just give me one second, please.
Sure.
I think it was somebody for the infrastructure communications or something like that.
I can answer that for you. Uh, that is actually just a retitle and reorganization. So you see it reflected in the budget as if that position is leaving. Uh, that position is currently held by Jan Rather. He is not leaving. He is actually becoming a manager. Um, and so absolutely, we are very proud of the great work that he has been doing. Um, and so he will be a manager now of, um, our, our performance and operations analyst, as well as the digital engagement coordinator.
I have actually seen him like handle very difficult situations and turn them into something, so I was going to make sure that that wasn't the case. Because I would hate to see somebody who's actually working and doing the job.
Absolutely. He's wonderful.
Okay. That's it for me really. I don't have much of anything else.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman, Councilperson Charlin.
Thank you. Uh, thank you for being here, uh, Chief Sweetley and Williams. I knew what you were saying. I, I got what you were saying. It was, uh, but I, so you mentioned, uh, in your opening discussion, the core functions that you were looking to restore. Um, I'm just curious if you can talk about what core functions you're proud of.
Yeah, no, the, the, I, I tell the story all the time. When we first came in, we received so many calls about clean and safe issues, primarily downtown, East Carson Street and some parts of the North Side. And for the first, I want to say several months, that must've been the largest cry we received. And when we went around and talked to folk, they talked about both internal staff as well as external citizens. They talked about the lack of having, um, you know, quality equipment or the lack of having, um, the ability to get our trash picked up in the time we, and matter of fact, the, the, the whole thing around the environmental services was really just, just the, the morale and the, it was just really heartbreaking when we was talking because the mayor made it a point to go. Matter of fact, he had all of us senior folk go in, on a snowy day at 6:00 AM and go ride, um, the environmental services trucks. So we could see for ourselves what was being told to us by the staff. And the mayor made a commitment, every, every one of those departments that he visited, he made a commitment and saying, I'm going to, in my first budget, the first opportunity that I have to put resources, I'm going to put the resources in you all. I'm gonna put them, I'm gonna try to get the equipment. I'm gonna try to get you the staff that you need because I do not want another cycle to come around where people are saying, why can't we get our trash picked up? Why can't we get our snow, um, plowed? Why can't we do the basic things that we expect government to do? I'm not going to have that be because we haven't invested in you. And he wasn't blaming anyone for that because he realized that coming out of Act 47, coming out of COVID, there were a lot of challenges that cities had to address. He made a commitment that that's what he was doing. And with your help, I mean, I, I, you, he couldn't have done that without you all, you all helped in his first allocation. He said, look, we're gonna, we're gonna double down on that. We hired staff, we gave them, we, we're still in the process of giving the, the tools to be better. But that is something that we're proud of. Now that's not something that, you know, you're going to see billboards being written about. But I guarantee you, if we were to show you the 311 call log from when we came in to now, drastically different.
I, just to build on that, I would also add, um, some of the investments that we have made into our bridge asset management program. So the fact that we are the city of bridges, but prior to our administration, we did not have an asset management program for infrastructure. That is something that we have stood up and created. And as you all know, we have now no, uh, failing bridges that are open in the city of Pittsburgh and we are continuing to move aggressively on repairs, rehabilitation and now maintenance, uh, which was not happening prior as well of those, uh, um, assets. Um, also mentioning, uh, specific to the mayor's office, one of the things that we were focused on was rebuilding core constituent services. So as, uh, Councilwoman Warwick mentioned, she talked about the door knocking. So, uh, through 2022, we started through now. We've knocked, uh, over 19,000 doors, um, to ensure, our neighborhood services team, to ensure that we are reaching those residents. If you look at, uh, some of our 311 requests, so we've in, prior to our administration, uh, 311 and across uh, cities across the country, they're typically utilized by more affluent, um, less diverse populations. We have increased usage of that 46% increase from extreme and high needs neighborhoods in our cities. So you're talking about our most marginalized citizens, which we talked about as, as a focus on. They are now accessing government more to be able to have their needs met. Despite that increase, uh, we have maintained our closure rates, which have increased from 2022 when we came in. We only had a closure rate for tickets of about 50%. We now have closure rates for tickets, uh, upwards, the highest we've had, we measure this each quarter, um, was 80% and we range anywhere from 60 to 74% quarter to quarter. Those are just a couple of examples. We have plenty that, uh, the mayor shared during his State of the City address about all of the things that we are certainly very proud of, especially even with our public safety as well.
So I, there's a couple of things on there that I, that you guys have mentioned that I do want to come back to. But I, because you took us to the 311 team, uh, wanted to go there.
Sure.
How many people are working the 311 team right now?
Absolutely. So I will pull that information out for you here. One second. Our neighborhood services team has a total of 18, um, members, which is made up of our 311 services team. You have, uh, a manager and an assistant manager for 311 operations. And then you have five full-time 311 call center representatives and three part-time 311 call center representatives. Um, you, all you didn't ask this, I will explain as well. We also have an outreach team and then you have some of the team members, uh, like Councilwoman, um, Kail Smith mentioned, related to infrastructure engagement, um, performance and operations and our digital engagement.
And therefore all of the departments utilization, so just want to be clear, they're not just directed by the mayor's office per se, but they are engaging citizens on behalf of all of our departments depending upon what their needs are.
Absolutely.
Cool. Um, and who, who is overseeing that now?
Uh, we have an acting, uh, senior manager, Paul Scott, which is who Councilwoman Kail Smith mentioned or referenced earlier.
I guess I haven't met Paul Scott.
He might not have had any neighborhoods in his portfolio that in your district previously, um, but that is happy to make an introduction as who is, is overseeing it.
Okay. Councilwoman says he's nice and that's a, it's a good compliment.
I don't say that about anybody, okay?
We will, we will take it back to him. He will love to hear that.
That means something. Um, okay. On my other series of questions here, uh, the communications team. So, uh, there, there's an interesting dynamic here where that your communications team is also the spokespeople for the city. You, they're, they're the spokespeople for the mayor's office, but also the spokespeople for the city.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and I know there's been some, uh, And I know there's been some staffing changes in the, the communications team. Have you landed on how the, the, the team will be staffed in the future here? Have you made those decisions? Are there positions available?
Positions are still available and there's nothing that really has changed. We're in the process of looking for a new comms director, but right now we have an acting comms director.
Okay. You know, the reason I ask that, again, it's, your communications don't just reflect your office, they reflect, you know, everyone here. I am continually, residents are showing me and I'm continually seeing typos that are coming into the, the communications. And those aren't things that just reflect poorly on your office. They reflect poorly on our, our office and on the rest of us here. Have any safeguards, have you considered any safeguards to to stop those? I, I'm a terrible first draft guy myself. I make typos left and right. So, but I know that I need somebody to look over things to make sure that when I'm communicating out in the public that I'm not, not making those kind of mistakes.
I, I personally haven't seen any of those communications that have come back with people about typos, but we certainly have safeguards. They're, they're not giving out, no, our comms folk aren't sending out, you know, first drafts. They definitely go through multiple drafts and there are multiple people who are looking at it. But any of those complaints that you've received, I would love to take a look at it. And like, again, I started off by saying, there are things and systems that we need to continuously improve upon. And certainly, no one wants to have anything that doesn't reflect the highest standards of this administration in our city. So we would love to figure that out. But we don't believe, I don't believe, I can't speak for Felicity here, but I don't believe our comm staff is sending out things that are not embedded. But if there are things that get through the cracks that has some errors, we'd definitely take a look at it.
Yeah, I, it just, you know, again, we're trying to sell the city, you know, as, as we all are. It's tough when, you know, you see a press release go out and like Pittsburgh's missing an H or Ganey is spelt wrong, those kind of things.
Definitely if Ganey is spelled wrong, we have a problem.
Ganey, yeah, yeah. I, I can, I can point to that. So you, you mentioned the, the equipment improvements and, and kind of the, the, your conversation about what you're proud of. I've got major equipment problems in my district. You just represent a good bit of my, my district here. And I believe you live in my district. The, there's, we don't have a pickup truck for snow removal in the slopes. We don't have trailers to move equipment from the strip district into the fourth division as we're trying to build the fourth division. Pickup trucks have to run back and forth, dropping off lawn mowers. I bought myself a lawnmower and I keep it in my spare bedroom so that I can help with the cleaning lanes. So I, I'm curious, you know, I know that we can talk about moving that ball forward. I don't think we've moved it far enough at all.
We, we would love to have more resources. I mean, as you, as you can imagine.
I'll buy you a lawnmower for your bedroom.
We, we would love to.
It's electric.
With, with your help, we would love to get more resources and allocate it back to the Department of Public Works. As, as you can imagine, getting the equipment, especially trucks, takes up as a, as a process of trying to order and get them in. We are in need in our public safety. We, we also classify Department of Public Works as our public safety needs, because you can't get your first responders out if they don't have the things they need. So we are talking with the state right now about coming up with some, some additional resources to fast track some of our equipment needs. So we're in the process, we agree, we, we are not where we need to be. We, we have not claimed to be where we need to be, but we are focused on trying to get that progress faster.
Yeah, I, I guess I just, when I hear that this is something you're, an accomplishment that you're proud of, but it's also something that is.
That tells you a lot about where we found things. And so what I'm saying is, you can't come in and overnight have everything the way you want it. And again, I, I hate getting put into this position where we're, some people will say that, well, you're attacking the last administration. It's not about attacking the last administration. What I'm saying is, there were some needs that we needed to do with our equipment and our personnel. And we have each budget tried to do a little bit to address those things. People can look at it and say, oh, you're not where you need to be. Of course we're not, because we didn't have unlimited resources to do it. And even if we did, it would still take us time to get the people hired, to get them trained, and to get the equipment in and processed and all that other stuff. But what I'm telling you is, we're proud of what we've done from
Where we started.
Day one to where we are now. And with your help, we'll continue to get better if, if you all don't reverse course and you keep the partnership moving forward.
But, you know, within those conversations, like ELA funding is, is going down, you know? So how are, how are we making those investments while we're trying to, you know, we're trying to buy pickup trucks with this money or, or what, what, what?
We're, we're going to other sources to help us. And, and, and I have to say this. And I'm, I'm gonna brag, because the mayor's time in Harrisburg and his prior relationships with people in Harrisburg, I think has been a benefit to this city in a time where we have needed federal and state resources to really do the things that we need to do in the city. And his, his ability and his relationships to help us in that manner, I think, will be beneficial, has been beneficial. But will be beneficial in this conversation, because we're working with our state partners to say, hey, we need this, we need to fast track some of this equipment stuff that we can't pay for all on our own yet. And they've said to us, give us the plan. They've been working with us on identifying resources to do that. And I think very shortly, you will see some of that come to fruition.
So I, I don't think I've seen, at least in my time on council, any state or federal money coming through to buy trucks. I, or, or equipment. I could, I could be wrong. I don't think that I've ever seen a payment come to the ELA. Maybe some, you know, environmental pilot money, but generally speaking, I have not seen that. Are you saying that is in the works?
I'm, I'm telling you, now, I can't speak to if, if there been some before. That, that's a Jake DeRecker Pollock question, and I think he can probably identify where that has happened in the past. But I'm telling you specifically, in a very short order, we'll probably have some announcement. I'm hoping, fingers crossed, we'll have some announcement where state resources will help us at least purchase some of our public safety stuff. And moving forward, may have some ways to purchase some of our other equipment costs.
Yeah, I'm, I'm very concerned about the equipment here. And this has kind of become like back to basics corner over here on the, the council table. But the hearing from Chief Gilchrist, who has done an amazing job with so many things, but also hearing how often trucks are breaking down for her, with, those are ambulances, those are life supporting, you know, life supporting vehicles there, that, that I'm not.
So, so, so when we call the press conference, I want you standing right there next to the mayor when we call a press conference where we can potentially have a couple of new ambulances for you.
I, I mean, I, I would be happy to, to come to that press conference.
There we go. And I want you to say something positive.
Well, you know.
I want you to say, because I'm telling you right here, it's the relationship that got you those things.
Yeah, I, and, you know, and I hope that, I hope that is true.
You want me to finish?
No, I, I would say, you know, I, I don't know, I don't know who would call me to invite me there. I'm not sure.
I'm gonna call you personally. I'm gonna call you and invite you.
I don't, I don't think you have my phone number.
I got your phone number.
Okay. So, but all, all that said, I, I think we've really got a lot more work to do than, than we can take victory laps on our, our back to basics, our basic services. I, I watched a lot across the street from me continue to grow, continue to grow, continue to grow, as many 311s as I put in, as many times I tried to talk to, to the division. That they can, they cannot keep up with our basic services. And the district that I represent, that, you know, a good portion of which that you represented, continues to have serious public works needs, continue, continues to have needs to be more clean. Therefore, cleanliness and safety go so hand in hand, therefore more safe. Therefore, more likely to be invested in. And right now, I, I don't feel like we are serving my district well.
I would just say, and I know that we, we're in a business of, you know, more, more, more. But I will say, the opposite is also true. Had we not taken the steps that we did in the prior few budgets to build the staffs up, to build the equipment up, imagine what the calls would be then and what the look would be at this point. The fact of the matter is, I think this administration, when we came in, I'm, I'm gonna use East, East Carson Street. East Carson Street was hell on earth, if you believed the calls that we were getting about the safety and the security. And again, I'm not saying that we're there yet. But I can guarantee you, looking today at what we are doing over there versus where we came in, there's light years difference. And there's still stuff to be done to improve it, but we are working on it. And so I'm gonna say, when we tell you we're working on it and we are improving, you can take that literally to the bank, because this mayor, when he says something, he means it. And he puts his resources there and you all's help have helped us do it. So we're not claiming it just for ourselves, because we couldn't have done it with you all, without you all helping us do it. And I'm telling you, we, we also agree we should be doing more back to our basics. And it's not a victory lap when you hear us, you ask me, what are we proud of? We're proud of the fact that we are returning back to core services. We're not trying to do things that we don't think government should be doing. We are trying to put ourselves in the role, what are the right roles for government? What are the partnerships that we need to do the other things that we need to do as a city? Right now, the core functions and basic functionings, we believe in that, we're committed to that, and we're trying to do that. And with your help, we'll continue to do that.
Yeah, I, I just, I think that it cannot come fast enough for those core functions to come to South of the River. I, I do want to acknowledge and give the, the mayor's office and public safety credit for the work that has been done on East Carson Street with an unbelievable police commander and an unbelievable sergeant, unfortunately, is off the job right now, who have worked really hard on that nighttime entertainment patrol, which, you know, to your credit, was something that the previous administration told us could not be done. We could not have that dedicated unit there. And that is something that we've done. If you take it away from me, I'm gonna have a, a real problem. But, but something that has been, been very successful in the district. The next step for us, and we've been working really hard on this, is getting to change the economy of the street. Giving, bringing in a business district manager, bringing in someone who, who actually can manage the street, manage the positive things that are happening there, as opposed to just coming in with a, a police hammer. And I, I would ask for you to be a partner with that, because thus far, as many times as I've brought this up, it doesn't seem like there's a partner, real partnership on doing more than the policing of the street. So I, I would ask for, you know, your assistance there. We've, the, the job application closed last weekend, but we're gonna continue to need funding if we actually want to do anything more than just police our way out of it.
We're always open for a conversation, Councilman.
Okay. Well, I, I would appreciate that. Yeah. Okay, that leaves my, my questions there. But appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilperson, Councilwoman Gross.
Thank you all. I appreciate your being here. It has gotten to be a long day with a lot of good questions and answers, back and forth, that I'm taking notes on. I was glad that we touched on communications, both kind of internal and external, and still trying to improve the capacity. But also acknowledging that comms or communications isn't only press releases, right? And so that you're knocking on doors, that you're doing events in each neighborhood, that you are having representatives from the various departments at community events, as well as the whole separate staffing of neighborhood services at those events. That is all the very many various ways that we all have to communicate these days. It really is tough. As Councilwoman Warwick mentioned, that our mainstream newspapers are not at the circulation they were, not at the staffing they were, and let alone, one of them's completely off the radar entirely, because we're not communicating with them over their labor disputes. It's really, it, it's changed the way that our, our constituents are getting their information. It's really challenging. You know, there was, there was a, a moment a few years ago where when you put something on your social media as a councilperson, people could see it. And now they don't. It is buried. Everybody's feeds are just not even reaching anyone. So, you know, you used to be able to be like, watch out, there's a water main break, or there's a, you know, you know, don't take Bigelow. And now, I don't think anybody would see it if you posted it there, you know, we can still try. So it's, it's a challenging and changing landscape. And I know that our efforts, we're trying to adjust there too. I do think it's also part of what we talked about with the OMB budget around kind of what are the both demands on basic services, kind of how we've allocated staffing, but then how we also have these kind of equipment things is, is all kind of a constant conversation, right? We, we also acknowledge that too. I do wanna say thank you for so many traffic calming projects that have gotten done. You know, we're always fighting to get more, I think each of us in our districts. And I know we haven't seen, there's lots of them that have gone on across the city, but we're grateful the ones that we've also seen in District Seven. You know, places where there were falling apart sidewalks, and it turned out there, they were actually city sidewalks. That was one of the first things I talked to the mayor about. And encouraged him to just go ahead and hire people in DPW to fix the kinds of things that we actually could fix internally, because they actually were ours. And I've gotten really good feedback from constituents where that's happened, either because it was city property or like a really obvious stuff, like, you know, sidewalks on our bridges, that they're ours, right? Or one of, especially is like the, the road that is One Wild Place, that's entirely inside Highland Park, right? And it was literally disintegrated and now it's brand new concrete. So, you know, those were, those had been on the request for a very, very long time. And so I do appreciate kind of seeing those kinds of basic services that have taken a long time. And I would say that it's still kind of complicated to me, and this is probably too much for today's conversation, because I can see how it's budgeted. But these, these groups that were brought back in-house in the mayor's office, I feel like we need to kind of talk about how, and you have presented on them in various other contexts, I think, how these programs that are running out of the mayor's office comport in a way, like fit together, stitched together. We're talking about workforce investments. We're talking about the business diversity, immigration, workforce development, even the gender equity commitment, which I know that you have presented on it. And so it's not really working in my brain right now to ask you the, like, how do I ask a coherent question of the mayor's budget and how those fit together? So why don't I just kind of throw it at you open-ended like that? Help me. What, what is the question I should be asking you about how this is in the mayor's budget?
One, one of the things, and I appreciate the question, Councilwoman. One of the things we, we really have been struggling with and what we're trying to work through is how do we make sure all of these things fit together? If we say, we're really trying to create a city that works for everyone. A lot of those, when you talk about workforce development, you talk about diversity, you're talking about our Office of Equal Protection, they all kind of fit together in a way to support our citizens and their rights and the things that they need to be safe, to be welcome, and to thrive. What we are trying to do in our, when we brought them back into the mayor's office, some of them are still independent offices. So the Office of Equal Protection is really an independent office. The Office of Business Diversity is an independent office. The Office of Immigrant and Refugee Affairs are independent offices. Their directors come before you, you know, you're, you're helping to decide the leadership of them. But they all should be constantly talking to one another, because a lot of what they're doing are trying to either help the compliance of rules and regulations or laws or to help people understand what their rights as citizens are or to help us meet the things that we say is a goal for our city around inclusion and diversity. So they need to be talking, they need to be coordinated, and they need to all be on the same page. So that's where we are trying to figure out how we align that. Because they shouldn't all have three independent ways of, you know, making sure compliance is happening. It's a continuum, right? So that we should have one system of how we are holding people in compliance and how their looks. There, there should be a constant, like, interaction. There should be a constant like interaction amongst them for it to work perfectly or to work better. And that's what we're trying to do when we're trying to align it up and to have them work together.
I would give you an example through our procurement modernization initiative. We have the Office of Business Diversity working with the Office of Equal Protection, and they are working to align, as Chief Wheatley was mentioning, the systems through how they do compliance. We want to standardize that work. So that is one thing that we are doing. You might also think about them as technical expertise that they are bringing to ensure that in the provision of our services, that they are accessible to our immigrant and refugee population. For example, thinking about language access with the Office of Immigrant and Refugee Affairs or with the Office of Equal Protection, ADA accommodation compliance and leading the ADA transition plan for our city, which is the first in decades for us to do that. If you think about also how we have our neighborhood services, right, as a core team of engagement professionals with engagement expertise, which is very different, as you heard Chief Wheatley talk about earlier, than the technical expertise of per se a planner or a domi engineer. And bringing those two together, we've seen where some of those collaborations have made progress in how we can move forward as a city, when you allow people to like specialize and do what they're good at, and then bring them together in work collaboration. So we continue to build upon systems to be able to do that work well.
I have this kind of Venn diagram that I can't quite again articulate in my brain enough where it's like, so we were just recently talking about things like asset management for bridges and infrastructure, even clean and lean type things, cleanliness, investment in like the capacity of both the organizational chart of people, but also of the equipment that takes care of like physical infrastructure, let's say. And then this is like the human capital.
Exactly.
Okay, got it. And then we kind of also do kind of like social infrastructure, which I consider separate than just a human capital one, right? Like human capital investments are kind of like what an individual has in terms of rights or a skill sets. But as a city, we also need that kind of social infrastructure or social capital, which is where there's space for connections, there's community mutual aid, some people call it. Some people call it just kind of like neighborliness. And I mentioned it, I think, at Budget Hearing last week, I can't remember why. So yeah, okay. I think my Venn diagram is starting to clarify here.
And I would say, Councilwoman, to that point, one of the ways you talk about that social infrastructure is the mayor's power to convene and how we are leveraging that in areas in which we don't have direct control or authority. So thinking about all the work we're doing around workforce development in collaboration with Partner for Work, all the work we're doing around aligning our PPS school systems with the city assets that we have. We're doing that in collaboration there. So we are, this human infrastructure is helping us to lead, not only looking internally for that technical expertise in our city services and departments, but then also those external collaborations where it is not the right role for us to perform workforce development or to perform public education. But we know that they are critical services for our city and for our residents to be able to achieve the vision that the mayor has set before us. And so convening and collaborating around those.
I think I'm getting it. I think I'm getting it. I'm going to leave it there. Adam Chair, well, I've actually got some clarity on something. I'm just going to hold that thought. I'll probably circle back to you.
Happy to help. Thank you. Venn diagram is set.
I can see it now. We'll build it for you.
All right. Thank you, Councilwoman, Councilwoman Wilson.
All right, thank you. And just get some housekeeping things in order before I start asking questions. This table here, I don't know why, I can't, I can't read it or-
It is not the most digestible format. That is what was sent over by OMB, so I didn't want to mess with it in case that I changed something.
Okay, there, let me just ask a question. So previous title, maybe I'll get the rhythm here. Social worker, sixty-eight thousand four hundred thirty-seven. Then new title is, I imagine it's not nothing.
It's collapsed to this here, collapsed to this one, I think. Yeah. So that was a position that was formerly in Neighborhood Services. That position no longer exists in Neighborhood Services. So one of the things that we have done is, as a city, is build out obviously our social worker team in the Office of Community Health and Safety. And so where we don't have that position anymore, what we do have is an idea coordinator, who that position previously sat at the front desk and did neighborhood services work, front desk engagement, constituent services. We now have an idea coordinator who fulfills some of those duties.
You have a what coordinator?
Idea coordinator, so inclusion, diversity, equity, and access.
Okay, so the social worker is going away, and that is now an idea coordinator.
It has already gone away, so we have not had that position through a portion of this year. Actually, the, one of our team members who was trained up in the mayor's office went on to take a role in public safety on their communications engagement team. She, professional development and growth, and we're very excited for her to go on and do that. So that position has already, social work has already been eliminated.
Okay. And then the office administrator, that's-
So that was their position we had originally intended to replace the social worker position. We decided not to fill that position and instead fill that idea coordinator position. So that was, that was a position that was never filled. And then we changed and decided to fill the idea coordinator position.
Basically, we combined two positions-
Into one.
Into one. And the functions are a hybrid function and role.
Okay. I got these arrows here now. Why did you draw it? Can you liaise on two? Okay. So community liaison to, that's a previous title, and then that goes to-
Neighborhood coordinator.
Neighborhood coordinator.
Yes, that was re-titled, yes.
Okay, so it does, I'm going to drop, I'll have to look at this. I have to look at the original version because it's, I don't know, this looks like a, you know, Excel to Word issue here. Microsoft is doing a great job. What's that? I don't know what's going on, but yeah, I'll look at this offline. So some of these ones, I just want to get an update on. The Office of Equal Protection, who's running that now?
Anne Marie Ellison. She is a manager for the Office of Equal Protection. She was formerly a compliance coordinator in the office.
So is the, the head position still open?
No, we eliminated that position and replaced it with a manager, which we promoted Anne Marie-
She will be coming before council.
Yes, we will be submitting her confirmation this week, actually, to become before council.
Okay. So before it was Zeke, and then, then the manager or assistant manager?
It was Zeke, and then there was a compliance coordinator, which was Anne Marie, and then an ADA rights and justice coordinator.
And then how's that going? Are we, you know, are you taking any measurements on, on how the, how the office is doing? We go to get an update. We'll have to get an update here.
I'm happy to provide that. We do quarterly reports with our staff, so we are happy to give you, we can give you updates for each quarter, Q3 of this year, however you would like that. So happy to provide that.
And then the Office of Business Diversity, that's under you, right? And then, help me to remember who, whoever sees that office? You oversee it.
Chuck Durham.
Chuck Durham is the manager of that office.
Okay. All right, we went over Office of Neighborhood Services. What's happening there? And then, yeah, what is the plan for Office of Communications? Maybe I missed this since-
We're right now looking for candidates for comms director, but we have an acting comms director who was previously in the office.
The position is currently posted, so if you guys know any wonderful people, we would be happy to take recommendations.
I got you. All right, so yeah, so I'm seeing though, so this minus three are some of these ones that you combine.
Correct.
So there are no added positions?
No.
All right, I'm just keeping my bearings here. I don't have any further questions. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you, Councilman. Any further questions from members?
I just want to make a statement. You know, I continue to hear a lot of times, and you would have acknowledged it today, that it's not that, you're not saying something bad about the previous administration. And because I want to say, everybody before us had a different task, a different job, a different challenge than we have today. And so maybe they did things differently than you did, but that maybe you're doing things that are important to your constituents. They maybe did things that are important to their constituents. So I just want to say, I think that every administration, I mean, I worked with Luke Ravenstall, then Bill Paduto, and then, and Guy Costa gave me three tickets while he was in office. So I'm just going to say, I understand that there's sometimes there's issues. But I, but I do want to say that I think that the previous administration did a really good job with a lot of things that maybe we're not addressing today or talking about today. And this administration has different priorities and they're doing different things. That's all. They just work differently. We all work differently than our predecessors.
No doubt.
Thanks.
Thank you. Before I let you go, I just wanted to say a few things that, they're not really questions, but you're welcome to respond. So out of all of the offices within the mayor's office, I mean, I'll underscore what Councilmember Warwick said, the Office of Neighborhood Services is one that I think we all interact with quite a bit, and I have only good things to say about that office. I agree. I mean, it's not as if there weren't liaisons from the mayor's office before, right? There's always been like the people who came to community meetings, but I really appreciate the structure where they're sort of embedded or they have certain spheres that they're in charge of, so you know. If I need to go to the director of a department, I can. But I can also just go to that liaison, and that's really helpful, and they're great. And, you know, I also know that there's been such an emphasis on, and therefore the creation of, you know, Office of Workforce Development, Youth and Education, sort of restructuring there, Business Diversity, Financial Empowerment, great work. And one that I just want to underscore and sort of highlight for two reasons. One, so the Office of Immigrant and Refugee Affairs, I know there's a new, I'm forgetting his name right now. I met him at the Turkish Cultural Center.
Nathan.
Nathan. So there's a new staffer there running that office. And I think it's only going to become more urgent and important in the coming years, year plus. I really hope that there is the support offered and, you know, whatever we can do to support him as well and his endeavors throughout the community. You know, in addition to continuing to build trust with, say, non-immigrant Pittsburghers who might view immigrants, refugees coming in as fighting for the same resources. I know that that dynamic exists, breaking down silos there to ensure that, like, that's not the case. We want to support everyone, and we desperately need new people coming to Pittsburgh to grow our population. Whether they are, you know, immigrants coming as refugees, whether they're immigrants coming as students, and then, you know, working as hard as we can to keep them here, however, whatever means possible to keep them here and working and contributing to the city, so. And then, you know, there's so much that a mayor has to do. But in that same vein of building our population, it's like walking and chewing gum at the same time. You've heard, and I wouldn't disagree, like, the basic services are always going to be the thing that you don't get credit for, but people notice if it goes wrong. So like continuing the basic services, improving all of that. And I would love to see even more marketing outside of the city, outside of the region, to help market Pittsburgh, to bring people in, to bring the workers in, to continue to grow our population. I just think it's so, so vital so that we just, you know, we do both. We take care of the people who are here, who have been here for generations, and we bring in the new people from outside of the city, whatever that looks like. And if there's any way that I can help with that, I'm happy to. I don't know how I would, but I just think it's so vital to continue that work as well. So those are all my comments. Feel free, if there's anything you'd like to say. If not, you know, it's also fine.
I just want to say thank you. I want to thank all of council for having us here. And we look forward to continually building our partnership, strengthening the partnership because this city is all of our cities. And what we do here is for all of our communities and all of our citizens. So we look forward to the work.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I will take a motion to recess.
So move.
All in favor?
Aye.